Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, July 12, 2023, regular schedule board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Evocation given by our Chaplain Commissioner Cameron Sapata?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we come before you right now, and we thank you for who you are. We ask you for wisdom and knowledge for all the county commissioners, every person that works for Hillsborough County. We pray for all the people that live in Hillsborough County. We pray that it is well with them and their spirit, soul, and body. We pray for protection over every person that serves in our military, every man, every woman serving, and also those that are serving in law enforcement, firefighters, all first responders. We pray for their protection, and we thank you for it right now in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. This morning, we have one proclamation to be presented, and it will be given by Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Would Elizabeth Mueller, founding member of the Hillsborough County Alliance for Citizens with Disabilities, and Carmen Labou, Hillsborough County's ADA officer, please join me at the Good morning and welcome. For more than 30 years, since it was signed into law by President George H.W. Bush, the Americans with Disabilities Act has played a significant role in raising awareness and establishing a comprehensive national mandate for eliminating discrimination against individuals with disabilities. It celebrates everyone's contributions. The ADA inspires us to share our spaces and make reasonable accommodations to enhance the lives of those who face challenges every day, doing things that many of us take for granted. I am honored to present this proclamation to Ms. Mueller, which recognizes people who contribute to our community with courage and strength every day. And this is signed by all seven county commissioners, marking Americans with Disabilities Act 33rd Anniversary Awareness Day. And it is signed this day, right here in Hillsborough County. So I'd love to invite you to say a few words, if you would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Please. Thank you. Good morning. Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Mueller, Commissioner Cohen, and thank you all for your support and for sponsoring this proclamation, and I thank you, all commissioners, for your effort. This year marks the 33rd anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act, which was signed into law, as Commissioner Cohen had mentioned, on July 26, 1990, by President George H.W. Bush. This federal law ensures that people with disabilities have the same rights and opportunities as everyone else. My son, Michael Mueller, is here joining us. He's 34 years old and was born with benign congenital hypotonia, which is lack of muscle tone. He also has autism, among other disabilities. However, Michael joins us today and provides support on all we do for our community. I have worked for Hillsborough County for 34 years, and in the late '80s, the Board of County Commissioners recognized the community that had a voice and was not heard, and so they created the Hillsborough County Alliance for Citizens with Disabilities advocacy group. The disability community has a voice that is embraced by Hillsborough County with the services they provide: disability backdoor trash collection, where people who are not able to push the trash cans to the curb as an option; and Hillsborough County Gas Pump Assistance Ordinance, which requires that every gas pump has a blue sticker providing motorists with Disabilities a phone number to call for help when pumping gas or diesel fuel. Hillsborough County's adaptive recreational programs are an inclusive environment for children with disabilities that invite them to recreational opportunities that adapt to their needs. I thank you all for your support, and I welcome you all to attend the ADA celebration at All Peoples Life Center on July 26. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe at this time, we're going to take a picture with the board. Okay? If everyone wants to come up, I'll take a picture.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Bonnie, want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one item that has been deferred to August 2. This is Item A4, which is to approve the first modification to the Community Development Block Grant Program Funding Agreement between Hillsborough County and Cove Behavioral Health. We have a few corrections to the agenda. The first one is Item A38. This is to accept the Fiscal Year 23 State Funded Grant Agreement for the Hazitous Materials Planning Grant Agreement. The correct amount is for $11,605.12 from the State of Florida Division of Emergency Management. And then Item E1 at 10:15 is a special appearance by Tom Morrison, who is Bond Counsel of the Hillsborough County Industrial Development Authority. We have a few items that have been removed from consent for highlighting or accommodation or announcement. The first one by Commissioner Cohen, which is Item A23, which is to adopt a resolution in the form presented related to the undergrounding of electric distribution facilities in the Dana Shores Pelican Island at Rocky Point Community. The second one is removed by Commissioner Wostol. It's Item A61, which is to authorize the use of available cooperative contracts with 10-8 Fire Safety, Fire and Safety, administered by the Florida Sheriff's Association and the Florida Association of Counties for the one-time purchase of five fire pumper trucks for the Fire Rescue Department. We have several items for time certain. The first one at 10 o'clock, Item D1, which is to hold a public hearing to consider the transfer of certain property rights within the Bomb Scrub ELAP site to the Water Resources Department in support of the South County Potable Water Transmission Main Project, and to adopt a resolution designating a portion of the site for the project. Item B2 at 10 o'clock is to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of the counties not to exceed $71,593,990.40 general obligation bonds for the Environmental Sensitive Lands Acquisition and Protection Program Series 2023 to finance and/or refinance capital projects relating to the Environmental Sensitive Land Acquisition and Protection Program. Item E1 is at 10:15. This is related to Item B1, which is an appearance by Tom Morrison, Bond Counsel of the Hillsborough County Industrial Development Authority, to discuss the B.O.C.C. consideration of Industrial Development Authority bonds for Tampa General Hospital. Item B1, related to Item E1, also at 10:15, is to approve the not-to-exceed $96,100,000 Hillsborough County Industrial Development Authority Revenue Bonds, refunding bonds for Tampa General Hospital Project Series 2023. Item G3 at 10:30 is to receive a report on the Tampa Bay Passenger Ferry Project from Facilities and Real Estate Services, along with Kimley Horn and Southswell Development Group. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Your motion to approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Kemp. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, the Board is going to the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to Board members. However, at the same time, it's requested that when you address the Board, that comments are not directed personally against the Board or staff, but rather the issues. The Board has set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comment at the end of the meeting. We'll call on speakers by name in the order in which their requests to speak have been received. When addressing the Boards, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Typically, we allow three minutes for each speaker. However, this morning, we have 43 speakers that have signed up to speak. There's no way that we'll be able to get to everyone this morning. However, in an attempt to hear as many folks as possible, what we typically do is go to two minutes a speaker. I do apologize for those that may have prepared a three-minute speech, but we do want to hear from as many people as possible. So we're going to have two minutes for each person. And the first three speakers are Carmen Edmonds, Jeffrey Franklin, and then Rick Coontz. Ms. Edwards? Or Edmonds? Good morning.
Morning. Point of order. Do we have to do a wave of the roll to do that?
Do we need to vote on that?
I think so.
Yes, it would be appropriate to do a waiver.
Can we have a motion on the two minutes?
I'll move to do that.
Second Commissioner Owen, please accord your vote. Please proceed.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Carmen Edmonds.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And I'm a precinct committee woman in Precinct 538. I'm here concerning the 2024 budget, and I'm asking again that this new Board please consider a moratorium on frivolous spending until a new fiscally responsible budget can be agreed upon and reworked. We need more money allocated to roads and infrastructure to support all the growth Hillsborough County is incurring. Let's spend taxpayer money more wisely. Let's fix our roads and stop frivolous spending on pet projects and things that do not benefit all of Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds. Jeffrey Franklin, followed by Rick Coontz, and then Maggie Locke. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How are you all today? Doing well? Great. My name is Jeffrey Franklin. I am a precinct committee man for Precinct 123. I'm here today to respectfully ask that you all fulfill your duties tasked to you as representatives of the citizens of Hillsborough County. I respectfully demand that property tax revenues be put back to use funding roads and transportation improvements here in Hillsborough County. I demand that you all commit to prioritizing and fully funding improvements to Hillsborough's largest assets, our roads. I understand in the past, priorities have gone away into special projects and to commissioners' wants over our needs. Well, I'm here to put the spotlight back to our needs. With record tax revenues incoming, a county fiscal year 24 budget that doesn't include prioritizing roads and transportation funding from the general fund growth will clearly demonstrate irresponsible governance. Let's spend our money wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rick Coontz, Maggie Locke, and then Tanya Doran. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm Rick Coontz, Precinct 700. Good morning. My wife, Chris, and I had the privilege of raising seven, six children. There were eight of us. How many were there? Six children, and we tried to avoid this like the plague, but every once in a while, we found all eight of us in a grocery store, going up and down the aisle, buying our items, kids giving us all kinds of suggestions of things that we should buy, different items, good items, some of them, all interesting, but none of them were on our list. We had two things, in fact, Chris and I, when we were in the store, a list of what we wanted to get, because that was our priority. We needed to have that food for the week, and then the cost. And we had a certain amount of money we could spend. It was going to be tight, but we had enough. We had it budgeted. And so I'm asking the same thing from you. I'm asking that the priority be for this county commission, the spending of our funds first and foremost on roads. It's not flashy, it's not fun, it's not exciting, but it's so, so very important. And then to stick to the budget. We don't need more money, we don't need more taxes, we need to use the money we have to build the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coontz. Maggie Locke, Tanya Doran, and then Robert Emerson. Good morning.
It's always bad to follow a preacher, but anyway, I'm going to give it a shot. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Maggie Locke, and I live in Wamama. Many roads in our county are in poor condition. I'm here to demand your attention, be focused on reallocating funds to our infrastructure and roads. Speaking from my perspective in South County, multiple high-rise apartments, single-family homes have been built, and additional apartments are being planned. Yet there are no plans for expanding the roads to accommodate that population. The roads from the intersection of Baum Road and 301 going all the way into Brandon are crumbling before our eyes. The traffic's heavy, and it will only increase with these building projects. And as you already know, lots of people are coming to Florida, and most of them are down there in my county. Recently, we learned about an 1,800 single-family home project that will be built in South County, adding more traffic to 674. 674 is already congested. Again, no plan for road expansion in this area. Let me be clear. Infrastructure and roads should be your priority. Roads and infrastructure are the responsibility of local government. You must be accountable for your actions. It's time to end favored projects that are considered wants, not what the citizens of this county needs. $40 million a year is taken from, excuse me, roads budget and allocated to nonprofit organizations. Nothing at all against nonprofit organizations, but we have to do needs versus wants. The time is now to stop discretionary spending and allocate $70 million annually to our infrastructure and road repairs, maintenance, and expansion needs of the county.
Thank you, Ms. Locke.
Thank you for your time. Now do the right thing.
Next three speakers, Tanya Doran, Robert Emerson, and then Chris Beard, I believe. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Tanya Doran. My family moved to Hillsborough County in 1971. I grew up and still live in Riverview. Currently, I serve as the CEO of Tampa Bay Ferries Alliance, an independent nonprofit organization committed to hiring, bringing permanent year-round ferry service to the Tampa Bay region. Prior to this, I served 14 years and worked at the Greater Riverview Chamber of Commerce, dedicated to building and connecting this community. Thank you for taking the time today to hear about the comprehensive report regarding the ferry plan. This is an important and essential transit solution for the congested roadways of Hillsborough County, and I appreciate your time to learn more about it today. At the conclusion of the project team's presentation, my hope is that you truly understand the incredible impact it will have on our county, the entire county. The ferry is a key element in connecting our communities. It will organically bring economic growth and better quality of life. Having good quality of life is essential for overall well-being. This plan makes sense. Ferries can't get caught in traffic. Ferries generate new business and support small businesses. Ferries reduce traffic because they take cars off roads. And, yes, ferries are fun. And when there is a need for expansion, adjusting schedules based on ridership numbers and adding new routes can easily be done, making it a cost-effective solution, as does, it does not require expensive infrastructure like building new roadways and expanding roadways, or resurfacing roadways. I have been blessed to serve as a McDill honorary commander. Thank you for your time today.
Appreciate your comments. Robert Emerson, Chris Beard, and then Fred Fallman. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm Robert Emerson of Apollo Beach. My concern today is budgeting responsibly. I have read credible accounts that nonprofits have accounted for $225 million in spending over the last 10 years. I appreciate what nonprofits can do in the community, but by any measure, that's an extremely high number. If you average it out, it's 22.5 million per year. When we have, as you've heard, substandard road maintenance and road safety issues, and we need to budget for the creation of new roads just to keep up with already established growth, it's just an extremely high number. Years ago, I was elected Township Auditor in Pennsylvania. As Township Auditor, I observed several things. One, I noticed that once a budget line item is established, it tends to stay in the budget year after year after year. Two, I observed that nonprofits are notoriously unaccountable for tangible results, again, year after year after year. The third thing I observed is that frequently, there is a kind of quid pro quo, or even kickback, involved with funding nonprofits. Now, I make no accusation here. I've observed this in other states, but I'm concerned about the unaccountability of nonprofits. Please keep these points in mind when you're completing the budgeting process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris Beard, Fred Fallman, and then Dr. James Davison. Good morning.
Hi, my name is Chris Beard. I live in Brandon, and I'm precinct committee woman for Precinct 829. I appreciate your attention and eye contact this morning with all of us that are speaking to you. I'm here to speak about the desperate need for funds to be applied to our roads as number one priority for this Board. With a massive influx of new people in Hillsborough County, not only do we need new roads, but we need the current roads maintained. New residents are resulting in increased county finances, and those funds need to be used for their intended use. The county does not have a money problem. As it's claimed, we have a spending problem and a priority problem. The 2024 budget needs to be reassessed and prioritized to return the funds to their original purpose. Like my friend Rick Coontz, my husband and I needed to make difficult decisions for our family. We can't have it all. We had to prioritize. And this Board was elected to be accountable to the tax-paying voters and to make these difficult decisions. So I thank you for doing that, and thank you for listening today.
Thank you, Ms. Beard. Fred Fallman, Dr. James Davison, and then Thomas Fletcher. Good morning, sir.
My name is Fred Fallman, and I am the Vice Chairman of the Tampa Ferry Alliance, a resident of Hillsborough County, and a retired Air Force officer, most recently serving at McDill Air Force Base. I'm here today to talk to you about water ferry transit. As you well know, our community is facing a number of challenges due to population growth and traffic congestion. I would imagine this is a consistent concern, as I'm hearing, among your constituents. Water ferry transit is a solution that can help us address these concerns. Specifically, I want to address the need for a ferry service between South Hillsborough County and McDill Air Force Base. As you know, McDill is our second-largest employer in Hillsborough County with over 15,000 on-base employees. In addition, McDill Air Force Base brings into Hillsborough County an economic impact of $3.6 billion. Many of those employees live in South Hillsborough County. The ferry route from Apollo Beach to McDill Air Force Base replaces a one-hour drive on local roads and highways with a 15-minute commute by water. The South Hillsborough-Mdill Route offers an excellent proof of concept for the future of commuter ferry service in the Tampa Bay area. Will it cost money to develop the transit option for the county? Of course. But everything costs money. According to FDOT, one lane of highway costs $1 million per mile. I'm sure many of you travel to waterside cities around the world and have seen how water transit options are used in many locations with populations similar to the greater Tampa Bay area. When I visit these areas, I wonder, why aren't we making the best use of this traffic reduction option? We need to start taking some leadership in the transit needs for the community and make the hard decisions to commit to our future. As leaders and members of the Hillsborough County Commission, we are relying on you to bring our community into the 21st century of commuter needs. Please support continuation of the ferry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fallman. Dr. James Davison, followed by Thomas Fletcher, and then Catherine Tucker. Good morning, Dr. Davison.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board. I'm Jim Davison from New Tampa, and I'm actually running for one of those seats up there. And bottom line is, you all know me, I've been doing this for 25 years. I got to read the present budget that you're considering, the two-year budget, just yesterday. I wanted the new members to understand that those numbers don't mean anything. They're superfluous. Two years ago, when they were doing it, the budget, the FY year you're in now, was scheduled to have a billion-dollar decrease over the FY '22. Last year, it had a $2 billion increase and a decrease in the amount of transportation funds to roads and bridges and sidewalks. This year, if I'm not mistaken, there is a $66 million new allocation to roads and bridges on a $9 billion budget. That is obscene. The only people that can fix this are you. The sales tax isn't coming back for five years, at least. We can't wait that long for this relief. As a physician, I can tell you the roads are dangerous. And I'm tired of having people come in who tripped over the sidewalks, who were in the car accidents, and you're the only people that can fix them. The money is there. I showed it before. It was unanimous decision by the Board to be passed. You need to do something like that again and get our roads fixed. Fix the bloody roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davison. Thomas Fletcher, followed by Catherine Tucker, and then Kelly Flannery.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tom Fletcher. I live at 10016 Kinder Drive in Gibsonton. Kinder Drive exits onto Gibsonton Drive, about five miles from Mosaic on the bay, which is the proposed location for the South County Ferry Terminal. Back in 1986, the USF sent me to McDill Air Force Base to take over one of the squadrons on base, and I vividly remember my troops talking a lot about the possibility of a South County ferry to McDill. That's 37 years ago. Actually, my wife and I both joined the workforce at McDill Air Force Base together over 25 years. We commuted to and from McDill, and after I retired from the Air Force, I took a job with the State of Florida over in St. Pete. For a little perspective, during those 24 years, I figured my wife and I traveled 368,000 miles and spent about 500,000 hours on the way to and from McDill and St. Pete. That computes to about 20,833 days on Hillsborough and Pinellas roads. I'm sure if I go back, if I was to go back on active duty, I would still hear a lot of talk at the base about the possibility of a South County ferry. Unfortunately, the troops and McDill leaders can't be here to address the issue with you today. However, I understand some excellent surveys of the troops and leadership at McDill have taken place, which were overwhelmingly in favor of the South County ferry. One final point. The economic impact of McDill- The economic impact of McDill is measured in billions of dollars, and you have to believe that the base is a big reason for years of growth, prosperity, and bragging rights for our community. But...
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. Catherine Tucker, Kelly Flannery, and then Joe Alito?
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Catherine Tucker. I'm from Lutes, Florida. Greetings from beautiful downtown Lutes. I used my GPS to get down here, and it told me to come straight down Nebraska Avenue. That was a mistake. Anyway, there were quite a few potholes down there, and the abundance of rain we've had lately has really eroded the roads, and it just gets in there and just tears it apart. But I'm just here to say, I think it's of paramount importance that we take care of our roads, do away with some of the fluff projects we have, and just spend the money on what it's supposed to be spent on. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Kelly Flannery, followed by Joe Alito, and then Sandra Cantu, which I believe is virtual. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Kelly Flannery, the very proud president and CEO of the South Tampa Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the South Tampa Chamber, representing more than 600 businesses, organizations, and individuals throughout the Tampa Bay area, we ask that you join us in support of the extension and expansion of our ferry service to include service between South Hillsborough County and McDill Air Force Base. McDill Air Force Base home to the 6th Air부 fueling wing, 927th air부 fueling wing, United States Special Operations Command, United States Central Command, and more than 30 other mission partners. With more than 15,000 employees, including active-duty and reserve service members and civilians, it is one of our largest employers in the region. Additionally, McDill recently became home to the aviation support facility for the Army Reserve Aviation Command and has been named the preferred location for a new KC-46 Air Force tanker squadron, all bringing additional jobs to the area and additional personnel to McDill in coming years. There are many factors at play when decisions like these are made, including community support, affordable housing, education, and quality of life. Basic transportation and infrastructure highly contribute to the quality of life of those who live and work here. The addition of the South County and McDill Route will improve the commuter experience for thousands of personnel daily and in turn remove cars from the roadways, enhancing the quality of life for those neighborhoods and communities en route to and from McDill and through the South Tampa community. As we work together as community leaders to enhance the lives of our residents and continue to attract new employers to the region, safe, quality transportation services will be a priority for years to come. For an area surrounded by water, it only makes sense that we find ways to use this resource to our advantage, and the ferry service is just the start of finding new and innovative ways to move people around. Tampa Bay and Hillsborough County is a desirable place to live, work, and play. Our population will continue to grow each year, and we must work now to make sure we can safely and comfortably accommodate those new residents and provide adequate transportation options and promote a high quality of life for years to come. We appreciate your vision to help us move our region forward and ask for your continued support.
Thank you, Ms. Flannery. Joe Alito, followed by Sandra Cantu, and then Sherri Southwell? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Joe Alito. I'm a 30-year, 31-year resident of South Hillsborough County. As a Realtor, I've closely watched the wonderful growth we've experienced along with the increase in traffic. So I'm here today representing the Veterans Council of Hillsborough County, a 501(c)(3) organization, whose members are made up of veteran service organizations from AMVETS to VFWs, with over 60 of these VSOs making up our membership. So as their spokesperson, I'm here to advocate for the many active-duty military who currently live in South Hillsborough County and make that daily commute to McDill Air Force Base. This commute on a normal traffic day takes from 60 minutes to oftentimes one and a half hours, and this commute is times two, going and coming. One of our core missions is to improve the quality of life for our military members. This goal is very achievable with the ferry commuter service being proposed for our South Hillsborough military, and if I can include contract employees of the Department of Defense, who have all responded very favorably that they would use this commuter service. A time savings of 45 minutes each way is expected, giving one and a half hours a day back to our military family. It's a monumental improvement to their quality of life. Let's put some numbers to these statistics. Fuel savings and tolls, they'll save $2,150 a year. So today, under the no ferry commuter service scenario, these military families are losing out on over 15 days with their families, and they're paying additional $2,150. Simple numbers hopefully will help all of us understand why this commuter service is so needed, especially if we want to see improvement in these families' quality of life. Plus, there...
Thank you, Mr. Alito. Sandra Cantu, followed by Sherri Southwell and Frank Gagliardi. Ms. Cantu, are you on the line?
I am, thank you.
Good morning.
And I do have some talking points, but just good morning, thank you. And also, thank you to the AVA and your service. Listening, I am from New York. I've lived here for two years now in South Tampa, near the base. But listening to the speakers, the not-for-profit bunnies, and especially the Chamber of Commerce, who are also lobbyists, the ferry is like shrinkling fairy dust. In New York, the only ferry that works is the Staten Island Ferry, and there's a reason for that. There's other ferries connecting the Hudson River, and guess what? Further upstate, and nobody uses them. So that's number one in answer to that. The flooding on Lois Avenue and Kennedy Boulevard is obnoxious. The roads, everyone that I speak to who are newcomers and Floridians, true Floridians, if you want to call them that, are shocked as well as I am with regards to the roads. Sorry, I had a lot of notes here. Basically, by improving and expanding transportation networks, we can enhance connectivity between regions, promote trade, and attract businesses. The infrastructure is thoroughly needed. My heart goes out to all of the workers and the contractors at McDill Air Force Base, but that is not the priority right now, nor is the priority putting money towards another failed not-for-profit that wants to be able to put their hand out. I know this isn't coming out right. I'm just a little agitated and listening to them complain. Basically, what needs to be allocated the funds to is to the roads and enhancing roads...
Thank you, Ms. Cantu.
...as well as expanding them.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Next three speakers are Sherri Southwell, Frank Gagliardi, and Arturo Wanderley, I think. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sherri Southwell, and I live in Apollo Beach, one of the worst traffic areas in the county, I believe. So $225 million of spending over a 10-year period with zero tracking, zero verification of how our tax dollars are being spent. Hillsborough County now funds over 100 nonprofits at roughly $40 million a year, siphoning money from the roads budget and reallocating it to nonprofits with no proof of service to the community required. Yet, this board has come to residents time and time again, asking for sales tax increases to fix roads left in disrepair year after year, apparently by design. To this, we say no more. The frivolous spending must end. Will you commit today to fund the minimum $70 million a year needed for annual road maintenance and expansion and fund infrastructure improvements before funding these nonprofits? Cap the percentage of our tax dollars these organizations receive and require complete transparency, or they lose all funding. We will be watching to see how this board responds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Southwell. Frank Gagliardi, Arturo Wanderley, and then Dana Galen? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I am a veteran, and I am a disabled retired police detective. Also, I am a constituent of Commissioner Myers by redistricting. And I have a question concerning nonprofits and the NGOs. On April 4th, or April 5th, Commissioner Wastel filed a report to this board concerning the NGOs and the nonprofits and the abuse and the fraud that had consisted of over 100 NGOs, two of which had CEOs that were making a salary of over $1 million, and we were funding probably 50 or more percent of that NGO. Over the past 10 years, he's been able to uncover $225 million in money that the Hillsborough County taxpayers have been funding, for all we know, illegitimate NGOs and nonprofits. Not saying that they all are illegitimate or frauds, but this has been going on, it's not just Republicans, it's Democrats. If you cut 50% of the NGOs and nonprofits out, that's approximately $12 million a year. Over the last 10 years, $120 million that could be spent on highways, sidewalk repair, and infrastructure. I would like to thank the commissioners here who voted yes for his remedy last meeting. First three remedies were the IRS Form 990, so you have to confront and you have to show what you're doing with the money. The second was the 20% funding. If you have a CEO or board member who is making more than $250,000, the county will only fund 20% of the NGO or nonprofit. And number three, the sunset rule. But my question to the commissioners who voted no is why? Why would you vote no on transparency and accountability? That is the question, and it will be coming up in November.
Thank you, sir. Arturo Wanderley, followed by Dana Galen, and then Michael Blaine? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity. I ask you to consider as your number one priority, road improvements. I've been here in Hillsborough County now for three years, and as an engineer, I notice things. And relative to the improvements that have been made, I wonder about accountability and review of what projects go forward in infrastructure improvement. For example, Cypress Village Boulevard, two lanes out of a four-lane roadway, two lanes on either side, one lane's dedicated to golf carts, okay? And a lot of work and effort has been put into that, yet in three years, I've seen no more than half a dozen golf carts, and quite frankly, they're not using the lanes that have been allocated to them, they're using the sidewalks still and going in the wrong direction. Pedestrians, there are no pedestrians. The other item that I noticed was the sidewalks constructed on Sun City Boulevard there, brand-new sidewalks that must have cost a fortune because it's cement, and yet there are no pedestrians on those sidewalks. Given the heat, the climate, I wonder if anybody's really doing their homework to evaluate projects as they come up for approval. I would ask the board to really consider in-depth review of any expenditures and accountability of those people that are performing the projects to make sure that they deliver what they promised. Thank you very much.
And sir, can you state your name just for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Arturo Wanderley.
All right, thank you, sir. Dana Galen, followed by Michael Blaine, and then Christopher Yanes? Good morning, Ms. Galen.
Good morning, Board. My name is Dana Galen. I live in Wyomma, and I'm the chair of the Hillsborough Republican Party. And I would like to see much more transparency than what we are seeing. I appreciate all of the work that you do. I definitely appreciate the nonprofit community being supported by you. However, I feel that we need to take care of the hard-working taxpayers who need good transportation, good roads, and I'm also very concerned about schoolchildren and buses. I think that that is very important, that we focus on our highways and we focus on our roads. We need to consider that our commuters are traveling to and from work to support their families. We have to be considerate of that. We need to prioritize the things that are important, which is taking care of our roads and our infrastructure. We also need to prioritize supporting families who are traveling on these roads every day. It makes no sense for us to have roads that are in such disrepair that people have to leave 15, 20 minutes earlier because of traffic issues on bad roads. We need transparency. We need prioritization. I respectfully demand that you consider the needs of this community and you consider the needs of the hard-working taxpayers in our community who need to travel on these roads every day. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Galen. Michael Blaine, Christopher Yanes, and then Michael Ball? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Michael Blaine. As a county resident and taxpayer, I am requesting that the Board of Commissioners appropriate any and all available money to badly-needed roads and infrastructure improvements within Hillsborough County. This action would benefit all county residents and not just a select few, as is the case with many nonprofits. The unreasonable, the unreasonable overdevelopment in recent years within this county has made this an issue that must be now made a priority. Now is the time, before you Commissioners begin making decisions for nonprofits that have little or no accountability for the taxpayer dollars that they receive and often have the appearance of a grift at our expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Christopher Yanes, followed by Michael Ball, and then Nancy Stevens? Good morning, sir.
My name is Chris Yanes, and I have the pleasure of representing the Tampa Bay Chamber as this year's Transportation Committee Chair, where we've been advocating for alleviating transportation issues throughout our region, much of which we've heard here this morning. Since moving to Tampa over five years ago, it's easy to see the dramatic changes that this region has gone through. Much of it good, but obviously some of it coming at a cost, especially with transportation. I myself am an Apollo Beach resident and have seen my commute increase a lot over the last couple of years. So definitely seeing road improvements is necessary, but we view this as a multifaceted thing, and that's where the Tampa Bay ferry could come into play. We understand that a lot of groundwork is already being laid for current road projects and potential future road projects. We're very thankful for this board at last month's meeting for re-upping the seasonal ferry service, as we've seen tremendous amount of growth and usage with that, with 62,000 users last year alone, and we anticipate obviously more in the coming year. Through this, though, we can hope, though, that making the ferry service permanent will continue to extend these public and private partnerships that make this community what it is and increase its strength. These community benefits are easy to see. Obviously, hopefully cutting down on our, you know, commute times to work, and then obviously enjoying one of Tampa's treasures, which is our waterways, and we don't really use that well at this present time. So we hope that you see the economic and the community benefits, and obviously, we understand that this is a big monetary undertaking, and we hope that we can work with you to execute that, because obviously, a vision without a plan is only a dream, and we hope to work with you all to help make that dream a reality through proper planning and proper execution, as we know this is taxpayers' money at stake. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Michael Ball, followed by Nancy Stevens, and then Jake Hoffman? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak today. I am Michael Ball, I'm the chairman of the Tampa Bay Ferries Alliance. I live in Apollo Beach. I operate, my business is down in the South County area, and I'm here to speak in support of the ferry and the use thereof. I say that because I've used the ferry before. I use it as a commuter. I lived in Seattle, Washington. I took it from Seattle to Bremerton every day. It was a wonderful thing to do, and I walked to work every day after that. It was an opportunity to use it, okay? I've also used, I'm also a retired naval officer. I retired out of McDill in 2019. I worked as the J3, as the operations officers, executive officer. I also worked as the chief of operations at the Joint Operations Center, U.S. Special Operations Command. I've seen the benefit of what a ferry can do. I've also seen the transit problems that we have in the area and the need to fix those roads and the need and the growth that we've had. Part of the solution set that comes with this and the natural order of things, and when the city grows to this size, is optionality. The roads have to be fixed. The infrastructure has to be done. The roads have to be fixed, the infrastructure has to be done, but there has to be optionality to it as well. People believe in it. And the other thing I'm going to hand you here is the base believes in this as well. This is a letter from the base CO, talking about the initiatives and support for those initiatives. The other thing I'm going to talk to you, the other thing I'll say real quick is to go back to Colonel Folman's comment about the support of the area. This is the report he was talking about, $3.8 billion done by MacDill Air Force Base. I will also give that to you as a matter of record. This area needs something along the lines of provide optionality. We're at a natural point in our development to do that. It's something that needs to be done. I benefited from when I was active duty. It's an opportunity to help support the veterans as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Nancy Stevens, followed by Jake Hoffman, and then Gil Martinez. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Stevens. I'm a board member of the Tampa Bay Ferries Alliance, and thank you for listening to a report later on about our South County Ferry. I'm also Conservation Chair of the Sierra Club Tampa Bay Group, and I sent you a letter that was approved by the Executive Committee representing our 2,500 members in Hillsborough County. I'll say a few words tonight, today, to highlight some of that letter. The Sierra Club Tampa Bay Group has long supported the idea of a ferry in Tampa Bay to provide transportation for residents who prefer an alternative to driving. But a ferry would benefit all residents by taking, even those who don't take the ferry, by taking cars off the road. And reducing congestion would defer the need to build more roads, build wider roads, to spend our precious infrastructure dollars on increasing the size of the roads. Fewer cars on the road provides environmental benefits as well by reducing greenhouse gases that contribute to global warming and nitrous oxide that contributes to the pollution of Tampa Bay. The proposed ferry terminal in South County is on an existing Mosaic plant, is a very good area for commuter ferry service. It's on the land, it's close to Big Bend Road, and provides convenient access to the many residents who live in the area. On the bay, it's located on an existing deep-water chip channel. This existing water highway is already been paid for, it's already been redredged to accommodate mosaic cargo, and is used by Mosaic. But it's also located next to the Big Bend TECO site, where manatees congregate in the cold weather. So it's very important that the ferry does not negatively impact the manatees. To this end, the Sierra Club has engaged with the project team to understand the dynamics of Tampa Bay's manatees, and how ferry vessels and operating plans can be developed to ensure that manatees are not negatively impacted.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Jake Hoffman, and then followed by Gil Martinez.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Last year, Hillsborough County went through an extensive process to create an equity action plan, and I quote, "Looks through the, all issues through the lens of equity." Please keep that in mind during the rest of my statement. While we have funded local nonprofits with over $200 million of unaudited taxpayer grants over the last 10 years, my local civic nonprofit, which specializes in the transformation of young adults, performs many charitable functions throughout the year, and positively affects hundreds of thousands of citizens in Hillsborough County, receives no funding. It is appalling that once again, the Tampa Bay Young Republicans were not slated to receive a single penny from the recommended budget next year. I am here on behalf of our low-budget, disadvantaged organization, that's main focus is to help transform the community for the better. We are asking the Commission to revisit the budget for a modest $1 million grant for our organization. But however, we don't want anyone to think that we're going to get special treatment, so we will not accept any public funding unless we are treated exactly the same as everyone else has been over the last 10 years. No audits, no tax returns, no transparency, no questions about my personal salary, and especially not my political donations. So many of these nonprofits do very valuable work, and I'm not taking anything away from that, but we will settle for nothing less than equitable treatment from this Board, and if the Tampa Bay Young Republicans cannot receive equal treatment under the current system, then something must change in how we award tens of millions of dollars each year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Last speaker this morning will be Gil Martinez.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pleasure to see you all this morning. Gil Martinez with the Wy Mama CDC, Wy Mama Community Development Corporation. I'm here to you to speak on behalf of the residents of Wy Mama, of our community. Wy Mama currently has about 4,000 developable acres available to it. We just approved a 900-acre, or at least zoning hearing master approved a 900-acre rezoning, 1,800 homes coming into Wy Mama. So the growth that's coming into Wy Mama is demanding of infrastructure improvements be made before or concurrent with the amount of development that's coming in. So I urge you to consider those concepts when we consider development in Wy Mama. How do we address infrastructure needs quickly? But I'm also here in support of the ferry alliance and the study that's here before you. As part of these improvements that are necessary, you can count that many of the people moving into Wy Mama will be employed at MacDill. This is an opportunity to create options for transportation, for transit, for connectivity. Please do not lose sight of it. I hope that you think about it and make this an opportunity for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. I want to thank everyone for coming down this morning, apologize we couldn't get to everyone. You'll have an opportunity into the meeting if you want to stick around. Bonnie, before we go to the consent agenda, we had a couple, a poll for highlighting, we need to guess address first.
Yes, sir. The first one is Item A23. And that was pulled by Commissioner Cohen.
Yes, and I did not pull it for the idea of not voting on it today. I wanted to pull it just to highlight, and also, I believe that Allison Roberts was here this morning to speak to it, but is unable to, but she led the effort to bury the electric lines in Dana Shores. And over the years, a number of neighborhoods have come to me in my capacity with the city or here to ask what the prospects are for actually initiating burying above-ground utilities. And Allison took it upon herself with some of her neighbors to actually do that in Dana Shores. It took about a decade. It was a major private-public partnership involving TECO and Hillsborough County. 60% of the neighbors had to agree, and then 99% ultimately ended up paying for the connection between the road and their house. But the bottom line of the matter is it can be done, and if people are interested in doing this in their own communities, we know about the benefits of undergrounding. It is something that I know the county attorney's office particularly really was able to assist in this citizen effort and making happen. So today is the culmination of it with A23, and I wanted to just highlight it for everyone's attention.
You want to make a motion?
Well, I'm going to add it back into the consent agenda.
I'd like to.
Commissioner Kemp.
Thanks. And I just want to say that I was here in 2003, '04, '05, '06, three, four, five, six, with Commissioner Castor as an aide, and it was when the project started. It was, actually, I guess that makes it two decades ago almost, and it has been an incredible effort. And I remember at the time, they were told that there is no benefit, in fact, it was loss of a benefit to have the lines undergrounded. And one thing I always remember is that MacDill had undergrounded all their lines for resiliency purposes. And so I think it's really an incredible effort by that community, and I think it will be an example for other communities, how to, you know, they invented the wheel. So they'll be able to follow their example. So I think it's a really wonderful thing, and the community has stepped up and said, "We want this added infrastructure here, and we're willing to pay for it," and worked very hard to get it. So it's all around a good thing.
Absolutely. One more, A61.
A61, pulled by Commissioner Wustel.
Commissioner Wustel.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make sure this item didn't get lost in an 80-page, or an 80-item consent, but everyone knows I'm the heaviest critic of government, but specifically of the federal government, and I believe that the taxpayers, after all of the issues that we heard this morning, deserve to know that there were a lot of bureaucratic reasons while we were on two weeks of meeting free for the commissioners, that the county could have lost $600,000, but thanks to Mr. Strowmer and his department and the county administrator, they were able to take action and save the taxpayers over a half a million dollars, and I believe that that's worth highlighting, and I move this back to consent. Thank you.
All right, so we just need a motion on the entire consent.
Second.
Motion on the consent agenda, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. No other comments, please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Bonnie?
Thank you. Perfect timing, it's 10 o'clock, so we can do our public hearing. This is Item D1. This is to consider transferring of certain property rights within the Bomb Scrub ELAP site over to the Water Department. We have Ross Dickerson here today to present this item.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ross Dickerson, Division Manager, Environmental Lands Management. The purpose of Agenda Item D1 is to, A, hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution which internally transfers certain property rights at the Bomb Scrub ELAP site from the ELAP program to the Water Resources Department in support of the South County Potable Water Transmission Project; B, adopt the resolution; and C, approve a budget amendment resolution accepting and appropriating $1,557,600 to the ELAP restoration project. This transfer of property rights to Water Resources is necessary for the construction of the critical potable water transmission line, which will improve water services throughout the southern portion of the county. In exchange, Water Resources has agreed to pay the $1,557,600 in compensation for the transfer, which will be used for restoration, and agreed to comply with certain conditions that will ensure the construction, installation, and maintenance of the pipeline will minimize adverse impacts to the Bomb Scrub Preserve. County staff, the county attorney's office, and bond council have reviewed the resolution, the applicable ELAP ordinance, and bond covenants, and have determined the transfer as presented is permissible. Both Conservation and Environmental Lands Management and Water Resources recommend approval of this item. We are available to answer any questions. We thank you for your time, and once again, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. This is public hearing, would anyone like to speak to this item? Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to say, great work. This is such a needed adoption here for the folks of South County. I really want to commend you all. I know my predecessor and me as well, when we were considering these routes to take that we're going to be busting up roads and things like that, you all took the initiative to look at some of the property that the county owns, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that, what a great thing this is going to be for South County, and I'll move for adoption of D1.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Second Commissioner Kemp, before calling Commissioner Kemp, there was one person that signed up to speak virtually. Is Mr. Harwell on the phone?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
All right, yes, sir.
My name is Buddy Harwell, Vice President of the Bomb Civic Association. I just wanted to, we do approve of this, we've had several members of the Civic Center work with Hillsborough County and ELAP to pick this route versus tearing up Bomb Wy Mama Road like Commissioner Owens had stated. So like I say, we agree with it, we like the idea, we were hoping to maybe get some walking trails and stuff along the pipeline, but I guess that's somewhere down the works. The main issue that we might have with this is concerns, is we would like some reassurance from the county somehow or another that this pipeline outside the urban service area will not make it easier for developers to hook up to. Now, we've been told that they should not be able to hook up to the South County Water Transmission Main, but it always seems like the county says that, and then later on, well, that they have to, we got to let them do it, or something like that. So we would just like to get some type of assurance like that, that it just doesn't make it easier for more sprawl out in the rural area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Kemp.
And I think we could have someone answer Mr. Harwell's concern. Would you like to, or I'm not sure who would.
Good morning, Commissioners. George Cassidy, Public Utilities. So typically, in our, in the rural area, we do not allow connection to a transmission main. So it takes some pretty extraordinary circumstances, maybe a public health concern, you know, there are instances across our service area where we've allowed connections in the rural area to a transmission main, but generally, no, it's not allowed.
Thank you. That wasn't what I, but once I heard Mr. Harwell's statements, I wanted it to be addressed because I know it's a great concern in South County. Thank you. And Mr. Harwell's certainly a wonderful watchdog for everything in South County, so thank you, Mr. Harwell, for keeping track of all this. And I'd just like to reiterate again that this is a wonderful project in so many ways, and it was a, I know, an incredible effort and collaboration among all different departments that I think are sometimes siloed or, you know, haven't come together over something like this. And again, I too would like to recognize Commissioner Smith, because I know that she just rode this very, very hard and with Tampa Bay water as well, in doing the planning and bringing this forward there, and it took so, it took so much work to put this together, and it's extremely good, and it's, thank you very much to our county administrator and our staff for collaborating over efforts like this because it benefits us all.
All right, thank you. So we got a motion to approve, Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Kemp. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item.
Thank you. The next item is Item B2. This is to present a resolution for the issuance of general obligation bonds to the Environmental Sensitive Lands Acquisition Program. Ross won't go too far, but Kevin Bricky will present this item, as well as there's a number of our staff, our bond council, and our own staff, who can answer any questions regarding this.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricky, Management and Budget. B2 is asking you to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of the county's 2023 general obligation bonds in the not-to-exceed amount of $71,593,990 to finance and refinance capital projects related to the ELAP program, and to approve related documents and delegate authority to the appropriate officials to carry this out. Approval of this Agenda Item is expected to increase FY20 ELAP debt service by $2.7 million, but that can be accommodated within the current mileage rate.
All right, thank you. Comments, questions, if not, can we have a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Owen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Bricky. Next item.
Thank you. We have a few minutes before 10:15, but I believe Tom Morrison is here. If maybe we could waive the rules to take that item?
Second.
Motion to waive the rules, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Morrison.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen, and staff. I am Tom Morrison, I'm legal counsel for the Industrial Development Authority. We're here today to seek your approval under TEFRA, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, of a bond issue, a tax-exempt bond issued by the authority in the amount of $91,600,000, which is an upset figure, but we expect it to be in that range. In 2012, the authority issued tax-exempt bonds to the benefit of Tampa General Hospital. Those bonds were outstanding for quite some time, and as is often the case, market conditions change, and it's to the benefit of the hospital to refinance their debt, to realize some debt service savings. Unfortunately for them, the market changes occurred before the date on which we could call the 2012 bonds, which required them to get a bridge loan from TD Bank for the purpose of taking out the 2012 bonds, which they did, and that was very beneficial. At this point, when TD Bank offered that loan, they agreed to exchange it for a tax-exempt bond to be issued by the authority, which we would have done in the first place had the timing under the tax code been favorable. the timing under the tax code been favorable. So at this point, the IDA proposes to issue bonds to take out the TD Bank loan. TD Bank has agreed to buy and hold the bonds. They'll bear an interest rate of 3.33% at this point. The, both the county staff and the IDA staff have gone through this and all have approved it. The IDA adopted an inducement resolution and entered a memorandum of agreement with Tampa General Hospital, which is in essence a commitment letter of sorts, that if they meet all of our requirements by the time the bonds are to be issued, we will in fact issue them, subject to your approval. Thus far, the hospital has either met all the obligations or agreed to at the time of closing, so therefore, the IDA recommends to this board to give your elected official approval to this financing, so that we can proceed. Of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Tampa General representatives are here, can answer questions, and I'm sure your staff can fill in any blanks that we may have left.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is all based on TGH's credit, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so I don't look at the county really as having a lot of risk here. Is that fair to say?
The county has no risk financially. We always discuss with staff that there's a political risk, if you will, because we are the Hillsborough County IDA.
Sure.
So if there was a default, there's some aspect of risk there, but we haven't had a default in a long, long time.
Okay, move for approval.
Second.
We got a motion to approve, Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Kemp. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you all, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
So if I could clarify, that was E1, and that was an appearance by Mr. Morrison.
Right, the vote was on B1.
Next item was B1, and I think that was what you were doing, the approval for the issuance of the bonds, and that bond, that number is $96,100,000, not to exceed, just for clarity.
Thank you.
Saved Ron from having to go through that. Since we still have time before 10:30, we could move to the rest of the agenda, if you prefer? Okay. We have one regular agenda item, item B3. This is to approve the second modification agreement with, for our design-build agreement, and so George Cassidy is here to present item B3.
Good morning, Commissioners. George Cassidy, Public Utilities. Item B3, we're asking for approval of a second modification to a progressive design-build contract with Wharton Smith, or excuse me, Westra Construction, for the construction of Segment 2 of the South County Potable Water Transmission Main. Segment 2 portion has been negotiated as a guaranteed maximum price of $43,967,567.23, bringing the total project cost to $113,582,844.36. The total contract price is about 7% higher than the original cost estimate, and that's due largely in part to inflationary pressures, increased material costs. Also, the previously approved D1 item through ELAP property was a route change, a small route change, and so those increased costs are included in this guaranteed maximum price cost. The modification also adds time to the contract to allow construction of Segment 2. We've got a final completion date of December 17, 2024. Also add that the contract goals for disadvantaged minority businesses was established at 10%. The contractor has exceeded that, and his participation is almost 15%. The Economic Development Department supports approval of the modification. Because this project was awarded prior to September 1 of 2021, the construction apprenticeship program does not apply at this time. Item B, as part of this, is to approve a fiscal year budget amendment to realign $39,480,924 within the Series 21 revenue bonds to fund this modification. I'm available for any questions.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're looking at about a 7% increase, is that safe to say?
Overall, yes, sir.
And we're using the existing bond proceeds for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. We still have some time before the 10:30 items, so the next item is going to be the presentation of the budget. And so Kevin Bricky is going to go through that, just I have a few comments while they're getting that PowerPoint up, if that's okay?
Sure.
And this is going to be the recommended budget for fiscal year '24, as well as the planned budget for fiscal year '25, and Kevin will go through the details and talk about the timetable. I did want to remind you that there's no action to be taken on the budget today. You did get budget books presented to your office, delivered to your office just yesterday afternoon, and it is also available online for you and for the public. On July 25, you're going to have another budget workshop. That one is going to be focusing on public safety and transportation, and on July 27, you're going to have the budget reconciliation meeting and public hearing, and the budget will be modified throughout the summer and ultimately adopted at the end of September. Despite inflationary pressures that we're all facing in our personal lives and at the county, this budget has focused on public safety and invests some newly available CIT dollars in a new fire station resurfacing and public safety and other community assets. Kevin will go through all that, and we look forward to meeting with you to discuss this budget and the modifications throughout the summer. I did want to thank Kevin and Tom Fessler and their budget staff for their diligence and professionalism throughout the year, but also in putting this budget together, and our department directors who are integral in doing that, and our executive team, and, but mostly, I really also wanted to mention our 5,300 employees who serve this county every day for making sure that the water flows, respond to emergencies, protect our pets, and goodness gracious, everything in between, and they do that in clear skies, and they do that in emergencies, and I really couldn't be more proud, and I want to thank them. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, who I have to apologize for using two minutes of his time, so, thank you.
You're on the clock, Kevin.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Mrs. Wise, and I know I'm on the clock. This is the county administrator's recommended budget being delivered to you today. It does become then yours for consideration and action through the summer and adoption in September. We were able to create and build this budget in an atmosphere where we've been recognized nationally for our budget presentations, recognized by the credit rating agencies, where we've received the AAA credit rating and recognized for sound policies and strong financial operating profile, as well as our departments also being recognized nationally for the good things they're doing, fleet services, code enforcement, human resources, others, children's services, social services, parks and recreation, aging services, and a number of our departments are accredited within the areas that they operate, such as real estate, facilities, services, fleet management, solid waste, our public works operations. During the legislative process, we also received some allocations from the legislature and approved by the governor, the African-American Arts and Cultural Center, $5 million, Emergency Operations Center, capital improvements, $2.5 million, and short-term residential treatment beds, 1.0, almost $1.6 million. So those are things that will be upcoming. We look at also the demonstrated operational efficiency and effectiveness that we've been experiencing. Our FY23 countywide millage is about 27% less than it was 25 years ago. Our population has increased by about 25%. Positions outside of fire rescue in the county administrator's organization is down by about 14% or 835 positions. We have increased positions in fire rescue since that time, because service demands have necessitated new fire stations and expansion in that area. We also looking at ad valorem growth, which of course, for our countywide general fund and unincorporated area general fund is the most important revenue, we had about 15% growth for FY23. We were expecting for FY24 about 12%, and indeed, the property appraisers' latest numbers are about 11.7% for $157 billion taxable value within the county for FY24. The FY24 recommended budget is $9.1 billion, that's 0.6 billion above the FY23 adopted budget. A large portion of that increase, almost $230 million, is for the new hospital-directed payment program. Within the total budget, the operating budget is $3.7 billion, as shown here in different areas. I would note that 50% of that operating budget occurs in those first four bars comprising public safety, our enterprise funds, water, solid waste, and healthcare services. Looking at the areas where the board has the most discretion, that would be the two general funds, the countywide general fund that funds services for all county residents, things like jail operations, human services, conservation, economic development. The millage rate there is 5.7309, which is about $1,719 on a home assessed at $350,000. The general fund recommended budget is about $1.4 billion. 55% of that goes to constitutional officers and outside agencies. Then the unincorporated area general fund, our other general fund, which funds services to unincorporated residents that are akin to the services that a city would provide its residents, things like law enforcement, fire rescue, parks and recreation, code enforcement. Our millage rate there is 4.3745, which is about $1,312 on the same house. Our millage rate is lower than the city's. And this graph shows the areas where the operating budget is allocated in the unincorporated area general fund. The first two are fire rescue and sheriff, so public safety accounts for 71% of that operating budget within the unincorporated fund. Our capital budget for FY24 recommended is $1.5 billion. 58% of that is within our water enterprise capital budget and transportation. Looking at general fund reserves, the board policy is 20% to 25% in the general funds in order to support, among other things, our AAA rating. In FY24, we were a hair above 24%. In FY23, we were a hair above 24%, we're a little bit below 24% for FY24, at 23.96. The countywide fund does have a higher percentage, as we do have more opportunity there in the unincorporated fund, which is stressed by population growth and demands. The countywide is about 24.8%, unincorporated area is 22.3%. A 1% change in reserves would be about $17.4 million, either way. For FY24, we had normal budget considerations that we look at every year, employee compensation, tax increment districts, which as property values increase, the payments to tax increments, districts and CRAs increases, our commissions to the tax collector and the property appraiser, maintaining the reserve policy, normal and budget, normal inflationary pressures and increases with population, commissioner budget requests and department requests that generally gather around maintaining our current service levels and assets. But we've had some extraordinary considerations for FY24, particularly when we look at compensation and even other costs in a higher inflationary environment. We've had some increases with our fire rescue contract, with our employee health insurance plan, the Florida retirement system, and those have affected constitutional agencies as well, which consumed about 41% of new growth funds. And also, just the cost of maintaining current levels under that higher inflationary atmosphere. Bobby mentioned community investment tax. The recommended budget does allocate about $56.6 million of community investment tax pay-as-you-go funds, $20 million to repaving, $15 million for a sheriff training facility and emergency management uses, $10 million more for jail major maintenance. We started that last year, that's renovating the residential pods. A new fire station, Progress Village South Fire Station, that also would include the operating costs in the unincorporated fund. $2 million more of CIT for the African-American Cultural Center and matching funds, and a million dollar increase in King Forest Park improvements, which that project was added to the CIT last year. This is looking at cost increases. That leaves about $5.3 million remaining available in the countywide fund, $2.1 million in the unincorporated fund. That could be available for commissioner requests and flagging, as we often call it. We had some innovative funding strategies in FY24 that included looking at fire rescue mutual aid services, that ends up seeing unincorporated areas, seeing unincorporated areas. We were able to incorporate the fund of some pressure, implementation of the new hospital-directed payment program, ELAP, as we just approved, or as you just approved, and we're exploring the possibility of funding some jail inmate healthcare with intelligent healthcare funds. General fund additions and public safety, mosquito control, the new fire station, increased funding for the sheriff, there's some security enhancements, transportation and parks, Upper Tampa Bay Trail, these are general fund additions, Upper Tampa Bay Trail, some funding for bridge and guard rail, safe streets, roadway preservation. And we always have technology and facilities increases as new facilities come onboard, and we have the infrastructure that goes along with that and just the operating costs. Employee compensation, I mentioned that already, we are under still stress when it comes to gaining and attracting employees, and there is increases in our employee health plan as well. Bonnie sort of went over the budget calendar. Today, of course, is the delivery of a recommended budget. We've had two workshops already on May 10 and June 8. June 25 will be the next budget workshop, that'll focus on public safety and transportation. And then shortly thereafter, on July 27, will be our reconciliation public hearing. That's where you'll set the initial millage rates, called the TRIM rates, and the flagging process and consideration of changes that you may have. And then that process would continue through August and culminate in September into required public hearings by state statute on the 14th and the final adoption on the 21st. The commissioner flagging process, certainly we're available to gather requests between now and the July 27 reconciliation meeting, any changes that you may have in the budget, additions, changes, et cetera. And of course, that can continue through the summer. So I thank you very much, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bricky. Very much appreciate the presentation. A couple of commissioner comments, Commissioner Kemp?
I hadn't seen any others on there, okay. I just wanted to, and again, I very much appreciate our budget staff. I know that we're very blessed, I think, to have the staff that we have that are so clear and helpful about understanding this. Just a couple of things that I think is important to, for those out there, you know how I talk about this a lot, is the two budgets we have, two general funds. The unincorporated Hillsborough County Fund, that funds the unincorporated in the way, I call it the city of Hillsborough County, as well as the general countywide fund, because we've been having a lot of discussion about these. The general countywide fund is paid by all the cities and the county residents at The general countywide fund is paid by all the cities and the county residents at 5.7 mils, correct? And then the unincorporated county fund, which funds things like roads and fire stations and the essentials of a stormwater, the essentials of a city, of a community. It's very unusual. We have this unincorporated area that's 1 million people. That millage is, again, how much?
4.37, a little bit more.
Right, 4.37 mils. And can you just say what the millage is for the other three cities in our county to fund their services and provide their roads and infrastructure?
Yes, I have that. Our unincorporated millage is 4.3745. This is FY23 rates, the current rates. The city of Tampa's is 6.2076, Plant Cities is 5.7157, and Temple Terrace's millage is 6555.
I just think it's so important because that is an incredibly stark difference in millage in terms of what the unincorporated county taxpayers are paying to support services in the 1 million, of the 1 million people in Hillsborough County unincorporated area. It's a much lower millage, like 2 mils, 2.5 mils lower than any of the three cities in Hillsborough County. I think that's very important for people to understand and know. And also, I think, just as a big picture item to look, I know we hear a lot about transportation, and rightly so. I have done nothing but focus on transportation for my years on the county commission. However, there are two categories that are far more overwhelming than our transportation, public safety. And those two categories, again, can you just let us know? What is the percentage that we, of our budget, that goes to public safety? And what are those departments? And this is our unincorporated Hillsborough County budget.
In the unincorporated area general fund, 71% of the operating dollars goes to public safety. The largest amount, bear with me a moment, and that's, the largest amount is to fire rescue, $244 million, the sheriff, $183 million. So combined, it's 71%.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to, I just think it's important for us to keep that in mind as we move forward in terms of how our budget works.
Commissioner Walston?
Thank you. I just, for people to understand why we don't take action today, we are not Congress. We received these last night or yesterday afternoon, and fortunately, we don't rush into decision-making and vote without ever getting an opportunity to read what we're placing on the taxpayers. I do have a couple of questions. I saw one slide on there on ELAP. Can you bring that slide back up? I like ELAP, I like green space just as much as the next person, but for people to understand, since we're explaining things, what are the three, what are the five letters of ELAP? What do they stand for?
Environmental Land Acquisition Protection Program. Thank you.
How much of the bond, that acronym is what was used to convince taxpayers to tax their property taxes? That's a property tax.
It is.
Correct? So that's an immediate bottom line cost of living increase to them. How much of the money of ELAP is used for protection?
The current ELAP millage is used for mainly acquisition of land.
That's right. And why is that?
We try to look at the operating from other funds, and the millage is mainly for that capital or land acquisition.
But it says protection, right? The tax was supposed to be about protection, and the fact of the matter is, is that for some reason, for state law, even though, I guess, voters didn't know that, instead of it being made transparent, we've shifted the burden of that protection onto the bottom line, general funds of Hillsborough County, correct?
That's where the operating occurs.
That's right. So it's, so that tax is not funded like voters thought it was. It had to be shifted because of the mechanism didn't allow for it to fulfill the protection standards that the bond tax had, correct?
We are following the law regarding how the referendum is permitted.
Right. So, but it's millions of dollars onto the bottom line of general fund dollars that were not from that tax approved. It's just from their base property taxes that fund their operating.
That's correct.
Okay. So that's one unexpected, unintended consequence and burden that exists within the budget. There's many, but that's one of those slides. Could you pull up the slide that talks about the 20% AAA bond rate rating?
Yes.
Was that the, I didn't, the slide went quick. Was it the countywide slide, or was that the unincorporated, or was that a combination of the two?
A combination.
It was a combination of the two. Do you, I don't know if you have in there, do we have available? And if not, that's fine, I can talk about it during the next meeting. So the 1% change in reserve equals 17.4% is a combination of both countywide and unincorporated, correct?
It would be.
Okay.
If it were proportional, it's about 2/3 countywide, 1/3 unincorporated.
1/3 unincorporated.
If it's proportional, yes.
Okay. Because one thing that I think needs to be talked about as we go through this process is, I do agree that operating, you know, a bond rating is about, it measures risk, right? Are they measuring our risk?
So a bond rating is pretty complex. It's looking at the financial stability of a jurisdiction. So it's political, it's financial, it's willingness, it's economic base. There are many things that go into a bond rating, and so sorry, because this is my world.
No, it's yours. That's why I asked, yeah. So I guess the point is, is we just heard a lot of it's willingness, right? And it's decision-making. If you're going to a bank and you show that you have a lot of money, that you're not willing to spend to maintain what you have, that could potentially negatively impact you over time. Where 20% is great until it gets to a point that maybe you should have been spending a little bit more of that to maintain things in a more timely manner. At what point do they say, hey, you're too risk adverse, you're not willing to spend your money, and then that negatively impacts our bond rating?
So I don't think the bond rating agencies actually review the county's operations to that level of detail. However, the board has a policy to have that reserve within 20% to 25%. I would imagine that's why the board has a cap on it as well as a floor, because they recognize that a range is appropriate. And in different economic environments, having a range is appropriate because you, you know, are trying to anticipate what may be coming in future years as well.
Okay. Well, there's a lot to get into here, and I will say thank you. You've done a great job, and you've answered all of my questions extremely thoroughly throughout the past seven or eight months, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for this report. And obviously, I haven't taken my deep dive into it, but I will be this weekend. And I guess my questions, I'm just going to stick to, are more of those processes that are coming forward. Could you put that up there, what the dates that we're shooting for here?
Yes, sir. Let's see. Whoops.
No problem.
There we go.
And while you're doing that, and commissioners, I know I've labored over this, the issues that I have in especially South County with the growth that we've had in public safety and the inability for our first responders to get there in a timely manner to save lives. And it's getting to a point where, especially with this new Live Local Act, where high reses, if they keep getting approved on the Riverview areas and the Brandon areas, we are in a really tough spot in public safety. And while I appreciate that we have one fire station coming, you know, obviously, I am going to be working as hard as I can to try to do better at that, because I don't know what I'm going to do in South County if we continue to move forward with growth like this without having proper response time for public safety. It's just, we're going to have to look at moratoriums or something. So the July 25th, which will be, that looks like a big day, public safety and transportation we're going to do together. I guess my question is, so for transportation, I really hate that transportation is a catch-all for transit and roads. It almost should be split up because roads are, obviously, as you saw here today, a big issue in and of itself. That workshop, will there be, like, will Chief Jones or fire rescue be attending that? And will they give their, if you could just?
Yes. So, yes, it is a big day, and they're not unrelated, right?
Right, right, right.
So, yes, Chief Jones will be there, they'll talk a little bit about the master plan, but also a lot of the transportation or some things you've said. So not only is it resurfacing, it's bridges, it's, you know, a lot of those other things. And as we know, as those roads deteriorate, they're more and more expensive to me.
Sure. And that's a great segue into my other question. When we're looking at funding for, say, repaving and what's baked in, are we going to be going off a priority list that already exists? Or how does that work? How will we know if we're approving X amount for improvements to roads and infrastructure that, well, where exactly are these funds going? Could you elaborate on that?
So what we tend to do, and for example, the 20 million that we have for resurfacing is a good example, and we really have some great precedent for some other investments the county has made in this, in this, in resurfacing, is we really like to work with, especially the district commissioners, because you know your district so well. So we have our own staff who have evaluated and given grades to these various roads, but we also know that you're getting a lot of calls on certain areas where there's been accidents, where there's been, you know, sometimes it's some of the insurance claims that we've had. And so we'd like to look at that information based on what you're hearing, what the community's providing, along with our analysis, our analytical work that goes with that, and we couple with it. So we would work with you before we present anything for final approval.
That's great, that's great. Okay, well, we'll be taking a deep dive into this. Thanks for your presentation today. Appreciate it.
All right. I don't see any other commissioners in the queue, so appreciate your presentation, Mr. Bricky.
Thank you.
All right, Bonnie, you got 10:30?
Yes, sir. We can now move to item G3. This is 10:30. This is to receive a report on the Tampa Bay passenger ferry project. And John Mueller will start this presentation, and we have various others from Kim Lee Horn and some others who are available for questions.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, commissioners. John Mueller, Director of Facilities Management and Real Estate Services. Today's status report on the Tampa Bay Ferry Project, at times also referred to as the South County Ferry Project, was prepared and will be presented by Kim Lee Horn. With regards to staff's review of the content, I just want to note a few things. The county HMS ferries and Southswell are currently engaged in a second interim agreement, which was dated September 22nd of 2021. The purpose of that was to include additional activities to further define costs and feasibility of the project as part of our due diligence for determination by the county in compliance with the Florida statute 255065. I mention that because that's commonly referred to as the P3 or Public Private Partnership statute. The second interim agreement that we're in recognizes that final assignment of costs, revenue, risks, et cetera, are subject to a yet-to-be negotiated comprehensive agreement. So while today you may hear some financial terms or other concepts presented, I just wanted to note they're there to provide you the conceptual framework as this study goes forward for your consideration. Please note that any of these things are still subject to a negotiation if this has gotten to the point of the comprehensive agreement or as that goes forward. And that, of course, would be presented to the board for consideration. We, as the county, must validate the terms of any potential comprehensive agreement and ensure that it's in the county's best interest and in compliance with the statute. So for staff today available here, along with me are Deputy County Administrator Greg Horwiddell, Special Projects Tom Foss, he is available virtually, Ms. Dana McDonald, our Business Operations Manager. I'm going to ask Dawn Dodge and Corinne Beam from Kim Lee Horn to come up and present the presentation, and I'll note that Rob Hart with Southswell is also here available for questions. Thank you.
Dawn? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Hi, good afternoon. Again, I'm Dawn Dodge with Kim Lee Horn. I'm going to present this report, this status report, but we tried to center it around the questions that were posed by commissioner, but make it more of a comprehensive status update. And again, Rob Hart is here, right behind me in person, to also address any questions if you don't feel that we responded to them. So, real quickly, the project background, this timeline summarizes the history of the project. You all have this in your staff report. Just should be noted that really, the efforts that we are working on right now started in October 2021. This slide illustrates the project teams and roles as outlined in the agreement. So again, you know, not necessarily repeating things that you might already know, but just to illustrate, you know, so we're tasked, undertake the tasks to the feasibility for the ferry project for the commuter service, which is from South Hillsborough County to the McDill. Here's the project schedule for, again, this is a project schedule for the tasks that we are currently under contract for within the second interim agreement. As you'll note, again, the comprehensive agreement is highlighted there, and that would be, you know, that is the biggest milestone that would occur, like, before anything proceeds with final design. This slide illustrates the task status. So these are all the different tasks that we are currently under contract for and the percent complete. And again, these are all the projects that we are currently under contract for, or the So the question arose about the capital costs and capacity. So this table illustrates the current costs updated in 2023. So I want to take a little bit of time and run through this. The first items, the mosaic, so this is the landside improvement, like, physical improvements, the waterside physical improvements, as well as the offsite improvements at McDill, or at Mosaic. These costs are updated due to the inflation and current construction costs. So that was the reason for the increase there. For McDill landside, there is an increase there due to the additional demand that has arose during our feasibility. Working closely with McDill and looking at the ridership, it has increased the demand for, so we're going to be including more bus shelters to accommodate the increased demand, bus lanes, as well as vehicle storage for these buses. So McDill waterside, that also results in inflation as well as the upsizing in the terminal. So all of the, for McDill, the barge is sized to hold the vessels, and we've been working with McDill to have the proper security in place so that they are secured before they get off the barge, which resulted in increase in size due to the larger vessel capacity. And then, lastly, the vessel and vehicles, you know, we inflated the current costs as well as increased the vessel capacity due to the increased demand, as well as working with the environmental agencies, and we are in increase in size due to the larger vessel capacity. And then lastly, the vessel and vehicles, you know, we inflated the current costs as well as increased the vessel capacity due to the increased demand, as well as working with the environmental agencies, and we are instituting some more improvements and technologies for manatee protection. This next slide illustrates the difference from the initial operating plan to the current operating plan. So the initial operating plan, as I mentioned, assumed the three 149 passenger vessels, which we were assuming then the maximum passengers to be approximately 1,900 passengers. The current operation plan is, can accommodate a maximum of 3,600 passengers. So going down, doing the math, the vehicle miles reduction is going from 24 million to 46 million. You also asked about the annualized capital and infrastructure costs. So those are illustrated here. So this slide is a snapshot of grants that we have started exploring for this project. As part of our contract, we will be identifying and developing a matrix that shows the timeline, the costs, a lot more detail than this, as far as with specifics of this project, which grants we could get, as well as identifying the cost, you know, the timing as well. But this is just a snapshot to show you the broad spectrum of grants that are, that are available for a project like this. And, you know, we definitely believe that this is, you know, highly, a high contender for grants, you know, and we're happy to see that, you know, the project has already secured a pretty sizable grant. But again, so these are, this is just a snapshot. The interstate, interstate service capacity, this table shows the capacity when you, while the main driver of this is the commuter service. The commuter service during off-peak hours will serve from South County to downtown Tampa to downtown St. Petersburg. So we did want to highlight that for you. And then it was asked about the environmental permitting status. So we have been working with McDill, as well as the Air Force in San Antonio, conducting regular bi-weekly environmental working groups. So we have been continuing those throughout this process. We've also been, we just illustrated here our different touchpoints, workshops, key workshops that we've had. So we're currently undergoing the consultation as part of the NEPA process and had a couple of pre-application meetings. So we've been implementing some of the, implementing some of the feedback, and we actually have another one tentatively scheduled for the next coming weeks. There was a question asked about the manti mitigation strategies. So while they have not been finalized yet, this table is, illustrates where we are currently with our proposed mitigation strategies. So we've broken it up into three categories, design elements, operational, as well as educational. So I won't necessarily dive into all of these, but we've been working with agencies on developing these, as well as working with many different manti experts in the area. So next steps, we are, will be undergoing the traffic analysis once school's in session. Actually, we'll start getting our counts. We will be submitting the Section 404 permit in the fall and continuing the NEPA process and progress to the design drawings. And now, like I mentioned, we're here for any questions.
All right. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Wollstill.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, what was your name?
Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn. You, you said one thing that actually threw me off that I hadn't read about yet. You said that you were including, and I'm trying to find where it's in here, that you're including bus stops and accounting for bus stops and buses where?
On McDill. So on the McDill, there's currently a, there's currently a circulator. So we are going to propose improvements, just shelters so that in climate weather.
Okay. So it's not bus stops in Apollo Beach, just as because the base is way too massive, and it's a people, ferry, transit, not a vehicle, right? So once they get there, they, I, I worked on the base. I was active duty for almost 10 years. I was on that base for almost five of them on and off when I wasn't in the Middle East. And it's horrible to get onto, and it's horrible to get around on, and base security is looking for a reason to pull you over. So I have a couple of questions. Let me find the slide. It's kind of a footnote that was added on to the bottom of page 11. I thought it was odd to be a footnote since it's such a massive number. It says estimated $175 million commitment. What is the commitment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start and then I can...
Yeah. Is it a surety bond? Are they going to guarantee us 175 million if operations go upside down?
Hello, Commission. Rob Hart, Southswell Development Group.
Hello, sir.
Just first of all, just going back to the, to the base, just so we understand the full scope of the project. So the concept of the ferry is it will arrive at the base, and then there will be a circulation on the base of articulated buses, which will then transport people around the base. I think your point is very valid. It seems like it would be a long walk to dig up from the, from the ferry.
And who's, who's paying for the buses? Is that included in this 75 million as well? And who, and the operations of the buses?
The operations of the buses are, are part of the, are part of the project operations. So they're, so those, the operations are covered by HMS.
They're part of the footnote?
Yes.
Okay.
Part of the footnote. And, and what these, what, what the footnote is, so just the way the business arrangement works right now is we're under the second interim public-private partnership agreement. It contemplates us getting to the point of having a complete and sort of shovel-ready project, at which point we would then come back to the county, and we would negotiate a comprehensive agreement and, and go through sort of the, you know, the financial commitments in very, very significantly more detail than we have now. The outline of the, of the project, though, just so we're clear, is that HMS Ferries, who is the ferry operator, just, just to define the partners again, I'm, I'm Southswell Development Group. We're responsible for the permitting and landside construction as one of the partners of the public partnership agreement. The other one is HMS Ferries, who's responsible for the ferry operations. Unfortunately for this meeting, Matt Miller, who is the, who is the president of HMS Ferries, wasn't able to, wasn't able to get on, to, to be able to speak through the system. I guess, I guess maybe he was able, wasn't aware, he had to sign up earlier. He's watching. But speaking for him and speaking for HMS, the outline and structure of the, of the, of the public-private partnership agreement is that HMS Ferries will be taking all operating risk, which is pretty remarkable when you think about...
But hold on, sir. I just, I have limited time, and there are seven of us.
Okay.
They're taking operating risk. Are they going to provide a guaranteed contract that if for any reason their private business doesn't make it, or it's not profitable, that the taxpayers aren't subsidizing more money?
All of those terms will be fully vetted and negotiated in the comprehensive agreement.
Okay. So the commitment is kind of a, it's a soft word, right? We don't know, then?
No, there's, I mean, the, the language, which is, which is in the existing agreement, fully, fully outlines and contemplates the responsibilities, the actual specific performance, whether there's a bond or whether, whatever else, whatever else the county would be looking for at that point. That's fully in the, in the county's control and the party's control to have that negotiation once we get to that point.
Okay. So then it's not there. It would just be a hope that it can get negotiated and approved?
I don't, I wouldn't call it a hope. I would call it something that's contemplated. HMS is the largest ferry operator in, in the country, and, and, you know, this is something that they're very comfortable and familiar with, and this is the premise of the project.
Okay. I'll ask Dawn a question. Does Kimley Horn know what the BRAC list is? I'll tell you. I was, my, my base was actually BRACed, and McDill has actually been on the list a couple of times before, while I was still in the military. The BRAC list is when the federal government has to decide and assess and close down bases. The base that one of my C-130T squadrons was on got BRACed, and then it got closed down, and I drove by it a decade later, and it was overgrown with weeds. It was a massive slot of land. They, they gave some of it to the locality, and a small amount was done with that land. So what happens to the operations if, if for some reason something shifts in the federal government and that base gets BRACed?
So what happens to the commuter service?
Yeah. Well, what, what happens about this $175 million commitment? That's, that's, right now, that's their sole source pipeline of revenue. Do you see how that could be a huge, huge risk?
So the, the bases revenue or...
Oh, right now, the, the current ridership estimates on the initial, I see that there's an update of this evening route, but the initial base outline was about federal ridership to and from the base, correct? Because for operational security reasons, you can't have civilians rolling up. We've, you know, we've had naval ships randomly blown up in bays that have killed hundreds of sailors, so the base is tight. So it'd be federal revenue that these initial operation estimates were based off of, correct?
So just be, so the question is, if the federal dollars go away, what does it do to the project?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a good question.
So I think it's, it's contemplated, actually, in the, in the existing agreement. There are, there are contingencies for what happens if, in fact, that, that circumstance happens. I mean, what would happen, obviously, is that if you didn't have operations, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have the expense, right? Because there's a lot of income that comes, you know...
Well, but there is an expense of 75 and a half million dollars that the taxpayers are being asked to build out.
Correct. And, and the, and, and a significant portion of that is contemplated to be, to be provided through grants and, and, and other sources. The last thing I'll say on that is that, is that the, the county ends up, ends up owning the assets. So in this, in this particular case, the $30 million of, of boats and trams, which will be, which will be a tangible asset, the county ends up owning those. So if, in fact, that happens in that circumstance, there is, there is significant assets that end up being owned by the county.
Assets that are now a risk to us because we're not ferryboat operators and owners. So how much risk, how much actual tangible risk is HMS taking on this agreement? It was a question that was, it actually, I was hoping that a lot of the good questions that were proposed were going to be answered in the report, but I'm sorry to say, but they, they really weren't. The current unknowns. So how much risk is HMS Ferry? And I don't, and I'm not asking about operating risks because I, I own a business, right? My risks were my upfront capital, and then my long-term gains come from that. So I get paid back on the back end. But right now, the way that I've read this contract is that we are fronting 100% of the capital needed, and then they get to reap the net profits. And then if their business model doesn't work out, then the taxpayers would be left with the 75 and a half million dollar burden.
It isn't contemplated that the county would be, in, in, in the agreement, it isn't contemplated that the county would be putting up $75 million. It's, it's contemplated that a significant portion of that...
But you haven't answered my question, sir.
Okay.
The question is, how much risk is HMS Ferry involved in, on the start of this process that are not the operating costs, which would only come afterwards?
HMS is taking 100% of the operational risk. There is no subsidy. So just in, in the concept of transportation programs, typically there's tremendous subsidies for operations. I mean, what's so special about this project is it's financially and market feasible. That actually covers where a private, where a, a private operator will come in and take, take the operational risk. That's a, that's, that's, that's a transformational circumstance in transportation.
So the answer is 0%, since we're not going, that is the answer to my, my question. Then if, if it can't be answered that they are not going to assume any of this upfront capital with their private business, then the answer is that it's 0%. So that's unfortunate to find out and hear. Look, I, I want good, effective, large movement around the county. I think that we all do. I, I look forward to hearing from my fellow members of the board, but I am going to go ahead and make a motion. If, if these questions can't be answered this far into the process, then I just have too many concerns going forward. So I will make a motion that in light of this report, after reviewing the Ferry Second Interim Agreement as amended, it is my understanding that the county has the right to terminate the agreement at any time with or without cause. As long as the project developer has given advance notice, that the board will consider terminating the agreement. I move that pursuant to Section 6B of the agreement, we direct the county administrator and county attorney to schedule an item for the August 2, 2023, regular board meeting for us to consider terminating the agreement, and also provide the project developer at least 14 calendar days written notice before we consider the item to terminate the agreement.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Wollstill, second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all so much for the overview. This project was an unsolicited project for the county. We have been working on this project for the past 10 years. And when I was reviewing the information, I do agree with Commissioner Watson. I thought your presentation would be to answer some of the questions that the board have already asked, and yet this morning, we're not hearing any, at least I'm not hearing any of the questions related to the report. In 2021, the cost of the project was $51,928,000. Today is $75,616,200. That's a difference of $23,688,200. Who's going to pay for that?
That'll be, that'll be part of the project capitalization stack, which is to be determined still. This is, this is, this is how the agreement is contemplated, that that's, once we get to the point where we can start to move into the grants, you know, then, then that's when, to me, is when the, the commission has a, has the time to make a determine if it's, if it's financially prudent for them. I mean, I'll tell you, from our perspective, we have a, we have a, a virtually shovel-ready market feasible, financial feasible project from an operational perspective, a project here which deals with the growth and deals with, deals with the congestion in a, in a fairly timely manner here. So that's, that's our, that's our, that's been the premise of the project, and that's been where we've been moving with this. Some of the delays historically have been related, quite frankly, to issues that were really outside of our control.
So are you saying when the county gets into the comprehensive agreement, that's when we're going to negotiate for the cost?
Yes. That's, that's how the structure of the contracts are.
Okay. Let me be clear. In November 8, 2022, when the 1% sales tax was voted down by the taxpayers, this project went down with it because that was included, this particular project was included. The county doesn't have the funding. I want to be real clear, and I know everyone spoke this morning about let's fund the ferry. Where are we going to get the funding from? The county doesn't have it. And I know in my district, when I attend town hall meetings, my constituents come to me, and they say, we need transportation, we need road improved, we need longer signal, signal traffic lights, sidewalks and all. No one has come to me about the ferry. And in these 10 years, I asked staff to look at who are we paid, and we've spent in 10 years, $2,618,351 just on a study. And what else? And what else to come when there's no money from Hillsborough County government, not for this particular project? I'm pretty sure you all were sitting here this morning when so many of our constituents came and talked about roads, improvements, public safety. Those are our top priorities right now. I mean, the projects sound good. If the county gets additional funding, we pass the tax in the coming years that we can fund a project like this, I'd be all for it. But right now, just don't see where we have the money. And my last statement is going to be, when you look at the project task status, that is on page eight, you might want to pull it up so the other commissioners could see it. In the Second Interim Agreement, you only have two items that were completed at 90% and you have the preliminary design at 60%. All other is less than 50%. So it's more time, it's more cost. Every time you come before the board, it's another increase, okay? But we're not getting a final product.
So I just want to illustrate, though, that's the process that we're in right now, the NEPA process, which is probably the most critical process. Once we're through that, that is when we will come back to you. So again, this is all funded, the tasks that we're doing, the project that we're doing right now is all funded. And when we conclude this, that's when we will have the final numbers and we will also have the final, you know, the outline of where the money is potentially going to come from, from grants. So that's kind of what we were trying to say, is that what we're contracted for and where we're at in the NEPA process, we're right at that process where, once we're complete, we will have more answers because we will be able to actually identify the funding sources.
And I think in your chart, it shows that you're going to be completed by sometime next year in 2024?
Yes.
You know what month in 2024?
So this agreement is through October 2024.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have. I might have additional questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kemp.
I'll start first responding to our, talking about that, this 75 million. All our costs are going up everywhere, 75 million. This is a cost for four ferries, the infrastructure improvements that would come in the land that Mosaic has donated, which in itself was a really incredible donation. And that would be for South County, which South County, from everything I've understood, everywhere I've been, I've been asked about this project, I can't even tell you how many times. I was kind of stunned, actually, by some of the groups that I went into. One, in fact, when I was asked to speak to a group of young black professionals, 30 or 40 people there about transit and transportation issues in Hillsborough County. And I started talking to them about CSX and people were desperately interested instead in the ferry, which I found amazing and shocking, and a lot of them had had experiences at McDill. And I've been told more than once about people who wanted to have a jet ski to ride across the bay, to go, they see it, right across the bay from Apollo Beach. We're talking about a 13-minute trip, avoiding hours around. I think I, one of the speakers this morning had said, you know, that he calculated out, looking for where my notes were, about the 550 hours of time, 833 days, he and his wife, in the 25 years that they commuted from South County to McDill. He calculated out that they had done 286,000 miles in their car, 833 days. And, you know, at great cost and expense in their lives. If we were another place and South County was populated like it is now, there might be an opportunity to build a bridge, because it's not, it's close enough that there could be a bridge from Apollo Beach to McDill, who is, by the way, our largest employer here in Hillsborough County and has thousands and thousands of employees that are on, in East and South County that come around. But another place with the population as it is now may have contemplated building a bridge across to get people there because it's such an important area and route. And you know how much the bridge would cost in capital? First of all, we couldn't do it because we have Panama ships now coming in, but even the old ships couldn't do it. But we'd be spending billions and billions of dollars, I guarantee you, on a bridge if it was put across there. And instead, we have this very flexible, very lightweight ferry system, which I can totally imagine that if something were to happen to McDill, it could be readily deployed in other routes that would be very, very feasible and provide us alternatives to getting to where people need to go in the county. I've imagined many other ferry routes that could exist and could happen, but wouldn't because this system's been designed with these four ferries to go here. But I imagine totally an expansion of the system. 75 million dollars, you know what that is? We've talked a lot about roads today. 75 million dollars, one mile of the widening of Van Dyke, we're talking about 80 to 100 million dollars. One mile of the widening of Lithia Pinecrest, we're talking about 80 to 100 million dollars. Those are the realities now. A mile of interstate, we're talking about 200 million at least. Those are the realities of what we get. And that, once you build it, that's not the end of it. The maintenance costs are tremendous, especially for roads that are used like that into the equivalent of hundreds of thousands of dollars per lane mile for maintenance. So this is a big, big bargain. But not only that, of the 75 million, those four ferries, we, right now, we have a federal commitment, a grant of $4.9 million to pay part of that, where we match it. We could do that with all of them. The ferries, if we ever had to, could be sold somewhere else and basically they don't lose value, like apparently, like other vehicles do, and can hold their value for many years later. They have a life of 25 to 30 years. So the other infrastructure is down at South County where it's needed anyway. They're on Big Ben Road, where we could use that. And we're, even if we did a cross bay ferry, let's say with just going from St. Pete to Tampa, that's only a 25-minute from South County to go to St. Pete, we're talking 25-minute ferry ride if we did that with the two ferries. I would say that we would be wasting our money if we invested the de minimis amount after 35 years of discussion in finally following through with this process, seeing if it's possible to have a ferry here, seeing what our real costs are, seeing what we could negotiate out in just another year and how this works. And they have made a commitment to operations, which is significant, and operations to get a system, a transportation system on the base. Right now, we're doing a lot of subsidizing our bus system, HART, to go to those parts of the county and bring people an hour and a half around, also on our van pool system. That's all subsidies that we're paying as taxpayers already. But, you know, finally, South County is exploding, as we all know, and they are desperate. Over the years, especially in South Hillsborough County, we've seen tremendous support for Hillsborough County Ferry Terminal. We have over 100 emails, almost all in support of this. We had people come today, there'll be many more. In the last week alone, residents sent more than 100 individual emails in support. They're looking for year-round expanded ferry service. Residents want to expand the service to more communities so that there can be more connections and destinations. It makes total sense and it is a low cost, even at the 75 million, less than a mile of expanded road at Lithia Pinecrest or Van Dyke. They want the plan to include not just downtown Tampa and downtown St. Petersburg, but they also want it to include South Hillsborough County and service to McDill and the Air Force Base, and there can be other destinations as well. I think it's very important that we finish this process, get all the facts, find out the feasibility, find out what can be negotiated in terms of cost for moving forward. And this is a great alternative to the utterly expensive infrastructure of roads and ever putting ever more pressure on those roads. I think this is very important that we move forward with this and get all our answers. And next year, we can come back and decide if, you know, if and why can be funded. But we can get federal grants, we can get state grants, we can get different grants for all four of the ferries, for the infrastructure on McDill Air Force Base, and possibly as well for the infrastructure in South County. That's not even a real, I would be shocked if we came in anywhere near those costs. And you can't get grants for everything. You can't get grants for a lot of the road projects that you want to do. So this is a great opportunity and it would be a terrible, terrible thing on this board if we decided not to move forward with at least exploring this and finally getting some answers.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen.
If I may, could I add?
No, sir, a lot of people in the queue here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there someone from our staff who's in charge of this that I can ask questions to? Is there anybody here?
One question, sir.
Whoever, I'll take whoever.
Yeah, myself and Deputy County Minister Horadell and Tom Phossus, virtual. If I can't answer it, I'll defer to them.
Thank you. I guess I'm a little confused on some of the statements that were made a little earlier on, we're going to assume all the operating risk, and this may be a new commissioner question. Is that something that is unique, that we would fully fund something like this and then we would take on operational? To me, it's, that would be their duty anyways, is to assume the operating risk. So could you elaborate on that a little bit?
So I'll take a stab at that, and Greg, you may want to add to it. So the very nature of a public-private partnership is there's a component of risk that is transferred to a private entity. And it's, as you analyze any P3 project, that's going to be one of the larger factors in looking at the, I'll say, our due diligence on, is this of benefit to the county on the risk? So I think you were referring to their, in their business proposals, what risk they were assuming.
Yeah, well, and I think in one of the gentlemen that spoke said it's unheard of that they're taking on, and maybe I misheard, but to me, I, and I know this is a creature of statute, and I've looked at the statute, but I just, I wasn't clear on that, and I wanted to make sure I understand the full breadth of how that works.
Yeah, I can't say if I, how I interpreted the word unheard of, but I do know that, I'm act, I'll full disclosure, you know, we have some people who've been going through P3 training, and we do know that that's a fundamental component of such an agreement.
Gotcha. And we haven't received, I think Commissioner Wollstill alluded to, mentioned a certi bond, but we haven't received any type of letter of credit or anything to date on this project?
None of that I'm aware of.
And we funded it a little over a million dollars already?
We have, just to make sure I have my number, I think Commissioner Myers made a comment on it. So up until the Second Interim Agreement, we showed approximately 1.4 million and some thousands that were spent up until that point. And then I'll just mention that with the beginning of the Second Interim Agreement, we committed to a total of 3.7 million. We have spent forecasting in some bills from May and June of this month, 1.178 million. And I will clarify that I have not put, the cross bay ferry is not part of those numbers in our calculation.
Okay. Yeah, and thank you. And I, you know, and Commissioner Kemp, I hear you about 75 million as far as, I don't think it's fair to use the road widening as the example because roads can be improved in so many other ways besides, no one understands the widening process better than me now. You know, I've been trying to widen one road for a long time, but there's also road paving that people in my district need. I represent South County. There's also serious, as we allude to it again, public safety concerns in South County. Do I like a ferryboat? I think, I do. I think it's a nice luxury and I think the people of South County would benefit from it. But is this price tag and us assuming this responsibility with such low risk the right thing for this board, the right decision for this board? And I think the answer to that is no, and I agree with a lot of Commissioner Myers' statements on our commitment to other components of roads and public safety before this. So I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you. Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you. Well, the first thing I would say is that I can count, so I'm not going to belabor this point for too long. But I fundamentally actually agree with many of the things that Commissioner Kemp said, particularly that I think the number is, it really shouldn't be sticker shock, given the inflationary pressures that we're seeing across the board and everything else that we do. We talk a lot here about the congestion in South County and it is very real. And the plea that we heard today to improve our roads is, to a large degree, driven by the frustration that people feel. I would just say a couple of things about that frustration. The first is that widening, fixing, repaving, doing everything we possibly can still isn't going to be enough to cure the level of congestion that we are seeing driven by the growth in this community. And I remember asking a DOT official many years ago what the real answer was to all of this, and they said you need everything. It's not a question of just having roads, it's not a question of just having ferries or trains or buses. You need it all to support 1.5 million people in a county this size. We have a very, very underfunded bus system. We all know the problems with that. Many of you sit on the heartboard. We certainly don't have a prospect right now in any reasonable timeline of any type of a train. But the ferries offer an opportunity because the right-of-way costs are just simply not there in the way that they are for the other projects. And so for that reason, I don't think we should pull the plug on this in the middle. I think we should at least see it through to its logical conclusion, which is next year when we have the negotiation. The final thing I want to say, it gets back to the South County congestion. The congestion in the city of Tampa is awful as well. And in South Tampa, the congestion is brutal, the growth has been brutal. And part of my frustration as a commissioner is that almost all of the transportation assets in that part of Tampa and throughout the peninsula are controlled by the city. There's a limited amount that the county can do. But one of the things that we can do is relieve some of the pressure of the traffic between South County and McDill, which is a very, very frequently traveled route. I will tell you that throughout the peninsula, as the traffic has gotten worse and as Bayshore has gotten more crowded and as the crosstown has gotten more crowded and as Dale Mayberry has gotten bumper to bumper, the excess traffic spills off into the neighborhoods. And anything that could be done to alleviate some of that congestion inside the neighborhoods would make a tremendous difference, particularly when it comes to people's commute times and to safety. So for that reason, I've heard a lot of enthusiasm for this project throughout the South Tampa Peninsula where the traffic impacts can be so acute. I also think, just to round it back, that given Mosaic's commitment of the land for the terminal and given the place that we are in the public-private partnership, the timing of terminating now just really doesn't make any sense. We should continue it through to its conclusion and then when it comes time to negotiate a final agreement, that, at that time, we could vote it up or vote it down. My sense today is, from what I'm hearing, is that that probably isn't what's going to happen, but I do think that that would be a more sensible way forward to seeing whether or not we can make this work.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, and then I'm going to make a couple remarks.
Yes, so as Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Kemp mentioned, that the reason why this price is changing, the cost is going up, the cost is, cost of everything is going up. However, we can only expect these numbers to change and get higher and higher because the cost is going up on everything continually. And therefore, we, I believe these numbers are only going to increase the costs in the future. So that's why, and also, so I believe that at this time, that, you know, the county, we just don't have the funds for, to support this at this time.
All right, thank you. I'm going to keep my remarks brief since, like Commissioner Cohen, I too can count. And I've been on record for a number of years now in my position. It was over 10 years ago that the county received a proposal for passenger ferry service. 10 years, 12 modifications, and significant cost increases later, here we are. I mean, to say that this project had nine lives would really be an understatement. Candidly, when I first heard the presentation as a member of TBARDA in 2015, I supported the concept of a passenger ferry. I was intrigued by the transit option that would utilize our waterways and take cars off of our overstressed streets. I felt that, you know, along with developing our downtown, this would allow us to better compete with our peer communities and ultimately take Tampa, Hillsborough County, and the region to the next level. In fact, a couple of years later, I was the one that made the motion to approve funding for the initial PD&E study. However, year after year, the project scope would change, the associated costs would increase. 12 modifications later to the agreement, the board ultimately voted to send it to HART, since that's our transit agency, and they're better equipped to manage the process than allow the transit project to compete with other transit projects. Now, I know HART doesn't have the money, but as Commissioner Myers stated, neither do we. The costs continue to increase. The current estimate is 75 million to transport 3,687 people. Now, that's not cars, that's people. The estimates that I was given that there's 163,000 daily vehicle trips on I-75, and based on that, staff estimates that less than 3,000 cars would be taken off of the street with this project. Yes, the investment, Commissioner Kemp said this through the years, the investment is much smaller than most transit projects. However, when you consider the cost for the minimal ridership, it just doesn't make good financial sense. The money could be better invested in other transit projects that would drastically improve the ridership. In fact, and I went back to my previous notes, and that's why the Tampa Bay Times Editorial Board in 2019 said, "This would be a costly project with little public benefit that is entirely in the wrong hands." 10 years into this discussion, there are still significant unknowns, making this project not only a house of cards, but a financial boondoggle. My priorities continue to be addressing our significant road and sidewalk needs. So in conclusion, I'm going to support the motion, which Commissioner Wostel made, that is to schedule an August 2nd board meeting to discuss terminating the agreement. Is that essential yet? Okay. That was a motion by Commissioner Wostel, Second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Cohen and Kemp voted no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next one?
We could now go to, oh, sorry.
Just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mo.
Sorry, John. We have a few staff reports. The first one is item G1. This was a request by Commissioner Myers to receive a report regarding the Second Chance Program for returning citizens. We have several staff here, because there were a few different questions that were asked at the time. So Cheryl Howell is here, Ivy Martin, Ken Jones, and Scott Stromer. They'll each take part of the presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cheryl Howell, Assistant County Administrator of Equity and Community Impact. Good to be here this morning, it's been a busy morning. On September 8, 2022, the Board of County Commissioners, the Board of County Commissioners meeting, the board directed the county attorney's office and the county administration to review and advise on three separate items. First of all, to explore the options for a possible apprentice program targeting ex-offenders aimed at helping them getting the training needed to achieve employment. And also look at, look at exploring partnering with the city of Tampa as well. The second one was to review and advise on the possibility of creating incentives to companies bidding on certain county contracts by awarding points during the procurement process related to the hiring of ex-offenders. And three, to advise if there are ways to strengthen Hillsborough County's hiring practices related to ex-offenders. Today, we have myself, we have Ken Jones with Economic Development, Scott Stromer with Procurement Services, and Ivy Martin with Human Resources to share on the findings and the different items that they've explored, and to bring back recommendations and any options. And so first, we'll hear from Ken Jones.
Good morning, Cheryl. Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Ken Jones, Director of the County's Minority Small Business Enterprise Program, housed in the Economic Development Department. Can you do the next slide? Can we do the next slide? Next slide, please. Is that the presentation? There you go, thank you. So staff has worked with and engaged with Career Source Tampa Bay, the administrator of our local publicly-funded workforce development system, to implement a workforce training initiative to support our Hillsborough County returning citizens. The primary goal of this initiative is to provide workforce training and job placement services to these citizens to develop foundational employability skills and aptitude to obtain employment. Since the program started up in April, Career Source Tampa Bay has met with community partners such as Abe Brown Ministries, has attended and joined the Hillsborough Ex-Offender Reentry Network, and has engaged with the Florida Hire's Program to receive referrals of Hillsborough County citizens nearing release from the state of Florida's Polk County Prison. By partnering with community-based organizations that have capabilities of serving this population and leveraging Career Source Tampa Bay's other programs and resources, they'll provide training from soft skills training to training that leads to industry certifications, support services to help overcome their barriers to employment, and engage employers in providing employment opportunities for these program participants. In closing, as directed by the board, we've explored and developed this workforce training initiative for our returning citizens with initial funding being accommodated within our already budgeted economic development incentive funds. That concludes my presentation. I'll be available at the end of the presentation for questions. With that said, I'll now turn it over to Scott Stromer, Director of the County's Procurement Services Department.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Next slide, please. Again, I'm Scott Stromer with the Procurement Services Department. So some of this looks familiar. So we talked about the construction apprenticeship program, some of the same challenges is what we found here as well. So the first one is, we are seeing some of that resistance to the county's programs because of the added cost of monitoring all that. Adding bonus points to procurements, because we do have a disadvantaged program that if you award points for another program, it could adversely impact that program. That's something we'd have to take a look at. And to support any kind of award of bonus points or preferences, we'd have to really have some rational basis that there's a, there's a reason why the county's doing that to alleviate a problem. We'd have to actually take a look at that to see if that's the case as well, to make sure that that's provable and we can withstand any kind of challenges. Next slide. So some of the possibilities, some of the viable options that are very similar to what we saw with construction apprenticeship program was, we can, we can try to work out some type of an incentive program at the back end of the process for those firms that do hire the ex-offenders and bring them on, and they can document, and we can set the, set the rules for that. They could be compensated for that. That's one way of doing it. The other, along with the apprenticeship program, is really helping create those pathways for those returning citizens. And in conjunction with setting up the networks and putting all the stakeholders together and making sure that we're very vocal in what our projects are and all of that. So, so there's a couple of options there that would be fairly easy to make happen. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ivy Martin, DHR Director, Human Resources, and it'll be for the next, next slide for her, please.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. So as it relates to strengthening the hiring practices, in 2014, Hillsborough County took the initiative to ban the box for Hillsborough County application processes for anyone who's applying. And that's specifically for the county administrator's office, the county attorney, as well as the county internal auditor. So since that time, since the top candidates, whenever they're identified, when they're applying for the position, that's when the county will then complete the background screening process. Again, that's for the top qualified candidate. Now, if that top candidate does have something that pops up in their background, starting in October of 2022, we began a pilot to revisit the criteria utilized during the background check process. This pilot includes no longer disqualifying applicants for criminal offenses that occur more than seven years prior, so long as that offense does not directly impact the position in which they're being considered. And then also, we are looking at active cases. With active cases, you're no longer disqualified if it is due to fees, and strictly due to fees, so long as the applicant can demonstrate that they are making the attempts to correct those fees. So with the approval of the board as it relates to this item, the county will adopt these new practices into the policy, which will allow the county to continue to remain on the forefront for recruitment and hiring and providing employment opportunities to returning citizens. I'll turn things back over to Cheryl Howell.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. And now we are here to answer any questions, hear any concerns. But I just want to say that really the success of this program lies with us strengthening our relationships with the community partners, with the sheriff's department, and agencies out in the community that's providing this grassroots effort.
All right, thank you, Cheryl. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to thank staff, Ken, Cheryl, Scott, and Ivy, because this new Second Chance Program give hope and opportunity to those who have been incarcerated, looking to take care of their family, take care of themselves, and can get a job. So my comments are very brief to say thank you so much for helping those in a situation like that who have been incarcerated. Thank you.
Commissioner Owen, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll echo that. I, I think these programs, I've had opportunities to go tour the facilities over there and see the look on a lot of the inmates' faces when they're excited about their new career. And recidivism's a real thing, and that is, that saves the taxpayers money. So appreciate you bringing this back up to light. And I guess my only question would be, on the, on the incentive program, do, do we have, similar to the construction apprentice, is it, do we run into those same software issues or anything similar to, to what we were facing on the construction apprenticeship program, or are they different challenges?
I think it'd be a different challenge, because we wouldn't be tracking hours and all that. I think it's just, can they document that they've got an effective program, and then we just have to figure out what that payment would be and come back to the board for whatever that incentive would be.
Very good, thank you.
Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you. I, I want to make sure, and for, it's good to, the administrator discloses to me that they removed that box. I always thought it was a ridiculous box to say, have you ever been convicted of some, there's so many crimes that should have absolutely nothing to do with whether or not you are, could be gainfully employed. So I'm glad that the county has that removed. I hear a lot of attorney commercials, and this, maybe I don't get the answer today, but they, it's a Morgan &amp; Morgan, no surprise, commercial that says, you know, did your employer hire a felon? And essentially, they caused you harm, and then we're going to sue the employer for you. So I just want to make sure if that's a, I'm not an attorney and I don't know, you know, but I want to make sure that if, first, I would fully support improving a second chance. That's not what I'm getting at. I think that it's critically important. Those communities have been devastated from horrible federal policies since Lyndon B. Johnson in the 60s, and it's just exacerbated from for-profit prisons. I could go on and on about how ridiculous it is that people have served their time to society, which we say is your requirement, and then we come back and we punish you still, and which results in you ultimately going back to jail, because you can't survive in the society that's left you behind. But I want to make sure that if there is some legal nuance that we don't unintentionally promote, does that make sense? If that exists, I just want to know about it so that we can handle it before any suggestion is made.
Yes, Commissioner, I do understand your question, but I'm very confident that the staff in implementing this will avoid all of that. Usually, those minefields have to do with insufficient background checks, unsensitive areas like working with children where you, was so obvious that you placed somebody at increased risk, and so I'm very confident that we will avoid all of that.
Okay, we got a motion to receive the report.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Kemp, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
The next item is item G2. This is to receive a report regarding amending the charter to implement nine single-member districts. Commissioner Owen, you had asked about this, and Mary Helen Ferris is here from the county attorney's office.
Morning.
Good morning, Mary Helen Ferris of the county attorney's office. The attached report was requested by Commissioner Owen. It just sets out the issue, has some background information, has some of the processes and timelines, so you know what would be involved. And also, we included some redistricting patterns from other counties, as well as the language in the charter. A board ordinance is one of the three ways a charter can be amended, and the ordinance proposing the amendment to the charter has to be approved by five members. I'll stop there and see if Commissioner Owen wants to...
All right, Commissioner Owen.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your patience with me on this, because we amended this a few times, just because I think there's so much information that we need in cooperation with the supervisor of elections. Would you agree with that?
Yes, absolutely.
And, you know, my position on this is, you know, I, I would prefer doing this sooner than later. I think that this board is very capable of handling the redistricting if, if the voting electorate agreed with this. And, you know, I look back at 2016, 18, and all the discussions on it, and all we're doing, we're not going to make the decision, the voters are. And all I want to do is propose this to the voters of Hillsborough County so they can make a decision. I mean, on average, Congress represents around 750,000 people, and we are, we are the local home rule, local politics closest to the people. I just think it's, it's an impossibility to represent 1.5 million people and take in all their considerations. So, so what I want to do here is, because my goal, or I would like to get this on the ballot sooner than later, and even for 2024. So I'm not comfortable right now proposing an actual draft ordinance because of the information I think we need from the supervisor of election. Would that, Mary Helen, would you agree with that?
Correct, yes, yes, absolutely.
So I'm going to make a motion. I move for staff to obtain the following information in order to incorporate these findings into a proposed ordinance. All of these items should be coordinated with the Hillsborough County Supervisor of Elections. One, the earliest date in 2024 for a special election for the voters to approve or reject nine single-member districts and the removal of countywide seats. Two, the costs associated with a special election. Three, if the measure passes in the special election, can redistricting occur prior to the deadline requirement so the newly formed districts can be implemented for the 2024 ballot? Four, if the measure passes, the recommended path for election years of the single-member districts for future elections. And lastly, five, have staff review Broward County's redistricting processes for Broward's transition into nine single-member districts and advise the board on these findings. And, and that's really what I looked at. I looked at Broward County, I thought was pretty instructive. They have around 1.9 million people. We are, we're getting there. We're going to be there before we know it. So, so I would like to get that information back pretty quickly, if possible. I'm sure that, that Mr. Latimer can answer these questions, I think, fairly I'm sure that Mr. Latimer can answer these questions, I think, fairly quickly, so that by the next board meeting, if this motion passes, I can propose a proposed ordinance. Thank you.
So are you requesting information come back the next board meeting, or just as quickly as?
Yes, the next board meeting, because the issues that, when I've been discussing this with Mary Helen and staff, is just the expedited nature of it. I think the original information that came back would have had this redistricting, everything occurring after 2024. Because of the, I think, the expedited nature of this that I'm proposing, we really need the supervisor of elections to chime in to see how that process will work for redistricting and adding the new member seats, and when do they run, and how will that work? So because of the, I just think there were some questions that we all had that we needed to get answered by the supervisor. So that's why I'm doing this motion before the proposed ordinance, so that we get it right, if the board so chooses to follow this, so that we get it right when we propose an actual ordinance.
Sure. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Owen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walstall. A number of commissioners in the queue. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like what you said about holding off on the ordinance, but I'd like to make a substitute motion. And that is to ask the county attorney, I'm sorry, the county administrator and the county attorney's office to bring back a comparison of a seven-member, single-member district versus a nine-member district, what would be the financial impact for both, and then that we hold workshops to get a better understanding of how these new single-member districts will work. So that's my substitute motion.
And may I point of order, I could incorporate that into the current motion. You're saying seven single-member versus nine single-member.
Yes. Am I, yes, I need to get clarification.
Yeah, I think you could, I think you could harmonize your two motions. You're just, you're both looking for information, and we could bring it all back. One caveat, though, August 2nd might be challenging. We'll do our absolute best to have it in a good package for you, but that's really given us only like six or seven days, but we'll do our best.
Well, let's not rush the judgment to make it August 2nd. I still think we have enough time if we agree to approve this as a board after we receive all the information. But at the earliest that you can maybe bring it, at the second meeting in August, I don't know what date that is, but would you agree to that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll stipulate to that and add that to a .6. Commissioner Myers incorporating her questions into the questions for the supervisor. Thanks.
And I think that makes sense. I was going to suggest that we look at both scenarios as well, so I think that's wise. Commissioner Walstall?
Yeah, we could even, I mean, you can look at escalation clauses by population. I mean, frankly, I don't know about you, Commissioner Cepeda, you were in the trenches with me, and we both just kind of had our head down for two years campaigning, but I didn't know that I would be representing more people than 11 governors. I don't know if you did that. You know, my analytics were about the budget, not about the representation poll, and it's untenable, frankly. And you're right, I do tell people no to things all the time that I would love to go to. I'm kind of hearing about how it's your district and not mine, I'm tired of that, no, I'm just kidding. But I do believe that local politics is the closest to the people, that you have the opportunity to talk to them, to know them, to represent them well, and I think that that is a component that's being missed out. I think that if the county was split in half, there would maybe be a continued need for countywides, but it didn't grow that way, and that would be now financially unfeasible more than likely. Even single-member districts in Hillsborough County at seven, and even nine, those single-member commissioners will still represent more people than many other counties throughout the state of Florida by themselves. I think that this is something that we really need to review and make sure that people have the best representation possible, so I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, well, I think all of those are realities brought forth by our huge population, 1.5 million people, we're physically the size of the state of Rhode Island. And actually, in the state of Florida, we're only the fourth-largest county by population, although we're growing quite a bit. But we've been through this many, many times. I'm just wondering, I'd just like to know what the thought is about what, when this goes to the voters, on what, what a cycle, election cycle.
Mr. Chairman, may I? And again, my understanding, that was the big question, Commissioner Kemp, that we kind of, we're going back and forth, and why I want to get this information back from the supervisor, is that we do have an election in March, my understanding, which it could go, and again, I don't know the answers to this, I'm, these are part of these questions, is if we, but if we were to get information from the supervisor that, say, it could go on the March ballot, we could redistrict and have it for the redistricting for next year's election. So I don't know if that's the case, though, but I think it is. But that's another reason why I'm posing it in the manner that I'm doing, so that this board is not caught off guard, or we're not preparing an ordinance that doesn't comply with the rules for next year, so.
And just to be clear, the March ballot, of course, would be a, the presidential primary, which would be a much more competitive, I assume, Republican primary than a Democratic primary. But I just wanted to, you know, recognize that, and then any other primary would be too late, I think, to do anything, because we have two elections there, so I can't see where it could be anything but that. But with that being said, we've been here many, many times. We have a unique system of government here in Hillsborough County. It's matched by Pinellas County as well. In the state of Florida, we have three countywides and four district commissioners. Right now, I can tell you, nine single-member districts would be less democracy, and we'd be paying a higher price. Currently, if a resident of Hillsborough County is concerned about issues before this board, the resident has four out of seven commissioners who answer to them in the next election. That's 57% of the board, a majority, who's accountable to any one resident of Hillsborough County. Under a nine-member, single-district plan, the resident has one out of nine commissioners who answer to them at the next election. That's 11% of the board that answers to them. That's a 46% loss in representation. This plan would also cost more, bigger government, we'd have to support two additional offices, requiring more staff time before every meeting, more staff assistance. It would be a big increase in government.
All right, Commissioner Cohen?
Honestly, I'm astonished at the scope of what is being suggested here. The county charter has been in effect for 40 years. With all due respect, you were elected in November, you've been here six months, and what you're suggesting is that either the job is too hard, or that within that amount of time, you've determined that the form of government we have no longer works. I think both of those things, I can't imagine either of them to actually be true. The idea that we want to put this on the March ballot, on a Republican presidential primary ballot, when we know that we're not going to have a representative sample of Hillsborough voters in place, only to then implement it in 2024, smacks to me of being very, very rapid. One of the things that I don't understand is why we're, if the true concern is that it's become impossible for a seven-member board to handle 1.5 million people, if we want to go to nine commissioners or more, why are we not discussing at least leaving the spirit of the charter in place, and having four countywide commissioners in five districts, or even something like the school board has, which would be more akin to six to three, leaving the three countywides alone and having six districts? Yes, the citizens wouldn't represent a majority, but they'd still have a significant impact on at least four of the nine seats that are up for election. To only look at single-member districts, to me, really misses the point, because all we hear is how we need more regional cooperation. All we hear is how we need more regional thinking, and yet what we'd be doing is dialing the clock back to essentially a very parochial system. Nine single-member districts means that there is no elected official on the county, on the county board who's thinking about the county as a whole. And I think that, given that our charter for 40 years has had countywide representation as its center, we shouldn't just throw that out so quickly, certainly not this quickly, without, Commissioner Myers mentioned having workshops, without having a real discussion about what it would mean to make such a fundamental change. I will never support doing this on anything other than a general election ballot. To the idea that we would do something this fundamental in order to rush doing it later, to me, that is insane. And I will also not vote for a motion that doesn't at least contemplate expanding the board in the context of the current, of the current division, and doesn't eliminate completely all of the countywide seats. I just, I think this is just astonishing in its breadth, without any, without some real analysis. You know, we have a charter review board every five years. They've considered this over and over and over again. And by the way, the boards were controlled by Republicans, and the boards have been controlled by Democrats. It's not like one party has been in control this entire time and the appointments have been stacked. But at the end of the day, over and over and over again, it's been discussed and rejected, and the idea that we would just come in and throw it on a March ballot, honestly, to me, is way too radical for something that we haven't even demonstrated yet has a significant problem.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and let me, first, Commissioner Kemp, your concerns that you alluded to, I think can be proposed to the voters. And Mary Helen, has this issue been proposed to the voters in the past?
No.
Okay, so remember, we're not making the decision, and every point you made can be made to the voters of Hillsborough County. I don't know why we don't want to give them an opportunity to make that decision. And Commissioner Cohen, you know, I'm surprised to hear you make a statement like you started off with, saying it's either too hard, or, you know, you, I would challenge any commissioner to keep up with me seven days a week in my district. I am confident I am the most active commissioner in my district and working my tail off. But do I, the second part of that, where you mentioned, do I think a different form of government is appropriate? Well, I think that's what I'm saying here. I think that I look at a model like Broward County that has 1.9 million people, that that is their system of government. Should there be seven single-member districts like Commissioner Myers proposed? Well, maybe, and we can have that discussion again later. But again, this is not actually drafting the ordinance, this is to get information back from the supervisor of election. So Commissioner Kemp, to your concerns, go to the voters, see if they agree. Let's not, let's not keep this from the voters, let's let them make the decision. Thank you.
Commissioner Walstall?
Yeah, I'm pretty astonished by some things, too. You sit on Tampa Bay water with me, Commissioner Cohen. Do you only, do you only think about District 1 where you're sitting on Tampa Bay water?
Absolutely not.
That's right, that's right, because those boards, those boards, we think about the entire county, and there's countywide representation on those subboards, correct?
But I represent Hillsborough County on that board. That's who's represented by my administration, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, you know.
So the, so the.
My mission, I'm given a mission by the county to represent the county. I mean, that's, that's my role there.
Thank you, yeah, absolutely. And we did that by simply having a commissioner assigned to another committee where they represent a countywide need, and we do it, and we do it well. And Commissioner Cohen represents countywide as a single-member district extremely well on Tampa Bay water. It's not what he was specifically elected to do, but by a function of the county government, we give the citizens of Hillsborough County countywide representation. Same thing goes for HART. When we're looking at trying to desperately expand it in the south part of the county, I believe that Route 13 is horrific, but I want to get it changed. And I imagine that Single Member District 3 might want to support something like that if it's discussed, or Single Member District 2, even though it fixes a problem countywide. As a function of county government, we are assigned to very important subroles. And I would say to your, to your comment of that you're astonished of if the job is too hard, I'd encourage you to run countywide, and see if you can properly get to everybody in a meaningful timeframe and represent them. This is a fact-finding mission to determine seven escalation clauses to nine, how much population is efficient for us to properly represent someone. This is not partisan, I'm astonished that it's being made bipartisan. This is about getting people the most local and close to their backyard representation that they expect possible. Thank you.
All right, a couple of comments here, and then we'll vote. Commissioner Cohen is right in that this is a wide scope, and I think he's also correct that throughout the years, the board has been both Republican and Democrat, and both sides have brought this issue up. But at the same time, I don't see anything wrong with getting the information, asking the question, it is going to be a lot of information. I like Commissioner Meyer's suggestion of also taking a look at seven single-member. The issue has come up three or four times in my time on the board, and it's been brought up by commissioners of both parties. And I guess I'll take exception with Commissioner Walstall, and I'm not surprised it's turned into a partisan thing, because each time partisan concerns have outweighed the policy or board composition positions that have been made. Although, I never recall it being publicly stated for basis of not moving forward as it has this morning. Additionally, I've been a district commissioner, I've been a countywide commissioner, so I fully understand the challenges of serving countywide, as you suggested, Commissioner Walstall. I understand how each office operates. And honestly, I can make the case for both our current structure, as well as single-member districts. I do agree that our current structure has worked well through the years, yet as well as our structure is operated, there's no ignoring the growth that Hillsborough County has experienced since the charter went into effect, as well as the future growth that the planners tell us is coming over the next 10 to 20 years. If our districts aren't unmanageable now, with 1.5 million residents, they will be very, very soon. I am struck by the fact that, and I didn't realize this, I probably should have, but of the 20 charter counties, only five have a mixed structure. I didn't realize that. And eight have single-member commissions, including the two largest, Miami-Dade and Broward, that have 13 and nine seats respectively. And the last thing I'll say, and then we'll vote, I hadn't given any thought, never heard of the possibility of a presidential primary ballot, so I have, walking into this, I have no preconceived thoughts about it. As Commissioner Cohen suggested, Republican, I'm putting on the political hat for a second, Republican turnout will be, will be greater, or should be greater, during the presidential primary ballot with an incumbent Democrat president. But thinking politically, I don't know if that's a positive thing for this effort, because through the years, I will tell you, Republican activists and commissioners have used the fact that this grows government and the cost increase as a basis not to support it. So the irony of it is, while Commissioner Cohen's right, you're probably going to have a bigger Republican turnout, I don't know if that helps the cause. I'm just tossing that out there. So with that, I am going to support the motion. I see no harm in getting additional information, and then we can, we can go from there. So motion by Commissioner.
Well, it's a point where I think, so my motion was substituted by Commissioner.
She didn't get a second.
Okay, okay.
So you're just going to incorporate Commissioner Meyer's suggestion, and you're good with that, Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Okay, so motion.
May I have a moment of clarification? So there will be no, no analysis of including countywide districts in your motion, and the motion is to look at the special election. in March, correct?
Well, no, that's not it, because I said March has a special election, but to ask the supervisor of elections, we could maybe do another special election. That's why I said, what are the costs involved with a special election?
It's a special election.
Correct, a special election, yeah, correct.
Okay, so the motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Winstall, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Cohen and Kemp voted no.
Thanks, Mary Helen. I bother, you got one more item, and then.
Just one more item. It's item G4. This is Commissioner Hagan. You had asked about this. This is a report regarding the Hillsborough County Swim Initiative Drowning Prevention Program, and Rick Valdez is here to present this item.
Hello, Commissioners. Rick Valdez, Parks and Recreation. I like to think they save the best for last, right? Thank you for the opportunity to be here today and share our swim initiative report with you. The report, which is included in your backup material, provides an overview of the history of the program and our plans to serve more children beginning this academic year. The report also highlights some great work by code enforcement and their swimming pool inspection program. Together, I believe we are making a lasting impact on the community and fostering a safer and more water-aware generation. I'm joined here today by Joe Gross, the Director of Code Enforcement, as well as Dr. Jay, who is joining us online, and we are here to answer any of your questions.
All right, thank you, Rick. I'm the one that brought this forward. I was going to make a couple of quick comments, and I knew we were running late. Commissioners, I brought this to the board back in 2015 with the goals just to teach as many children as possible how to swim. And I felt, and staff felt, it was wise to start with those who are most at risk. So that's why we initially started with Head Start and early Head Start Children Program. Was very successful, grew every year, but then they had challenges with some transportation challenges, and then obviously through COVID. I'm thrilled to see, looking at the backup, that they're on track this year to serve more children than any other year, and in fact, they're going to double the best year they had in the past. So with an additional 16,000 that I'm going to flag on the reconciliation meeting, don't need to take action today. I'm going to flag it then. We'll provide swimming lessons to all Head Start students, and we'll also expand the program to about 600 students from Parks and Rec Summer Camp Program. And the last thing I'll say is, one of our partners, High Five, has some great ideas on how we can potentially expand this program by partnering with the private sector and community leaders, and we're going to explore that for future, future years down the road. But Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I just want to say this is excellent. Totally in support of it, and I just, it occurred to me for a moment about, some people know it as Beer Can Island, Pine Key Island, just at Memorial Day, with a incredible, unfortunate boating accident where one of the occupants of the boat jumped off to, they were having issues, and he drowned. He drowned a young man, and I saw that he couldn't swim. And I just, I just think it's so important that when we're living around all this water everywhere, and there's pools everywhere, that everything we can do so that everyone is equipped, so that they can swim, and at least have a fighting chance if they find themselves in water that's too deep. So it's really important and significant.
Thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for bringing this forward. And it's hard for me not to roast you right now. We played baseball together back in college. I'm, we're almost out of time, so I'll leave it alone. But I can also tell you that, that High Five, who you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, they are expanding their programs. I spent a lot of time over there, actually learned to swim in that same pool that we helped fund. And they're expanding programs out to the inner cities where kids that don't have access to pools can learn to swim. So it's really a great initiative, and thank you for your leadership on this.
I appreciate that. Yeah, Chuck's got some great ideas, and they're going to sit down with Rick and staff here moving forward to how we can expand it. So that's great. Appreciate your comments.
Yeah, thank you, Rick, for being here, bud.
Do we know if it'll include that, I know the videos seem traumatizing, but it saves lives, the ones where they ultimately throw the infant in the pool to make sure that they can be buoyant and turn themselves upside down? Have you seen that? But it's really important, especially in Florida with all the new people moving down here with swimming pools that don't understand how quickly a young child can go in and drown.
Right. I'm not sure if it will include that video. We do have curriculum that goes along with it.
Not the video specifically, but the training.
Training, yes. So we don't serve infants, and our proposal here, we start with Head Start.
Okay.
So they are young, but not quite infants.
All right, can we have a motion to receive? Motion received. Therefore, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Owen, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
I know you all are packing up, but we do have future issue items. If any.
I actually do have one.
Commissioner Winstall?
Thank you. Long morning, first day back. I, there is an agreement. I've been trying to find the exact date, but I couldn't yet. It's several decades old, but there's an interlocal agreement that seems that it was part of a settlement with the municipalities of Hillsborough County. And it turns out that Hillsborough County owns a lot of roads in the municipalities. Specifically, the countywide funds could be going to better maintain and improve those roads. So I would like to request that county staff bring back a detailed report of all of the roads that are owned, in which municipalities they're owned by Hillsborough County, or if not owned, required to maintain by that agreement, and estimated costs of the, we'll just call it state of repair, and then staff can decide what that appropriate number is. Does that make sense? Because I know there's a lot of variables, but I want to know what the, if we're behind on a lot of those countywide roads, what's the cost of the state of the repair is, and then I'll, and then I'll go from there.
Are you good with that?
Right. We can provide information on what countywide roads are in the cities, as well as their condition, and maybe how much it costs us to maintain each year. Would be helpful, too.
Any other future issues? We do have about 10 people that had signed up to speak, so I'm going to call their names for public comment if we don't have any other future issues. Josie Fickey, Gary Cloud, Brian Roberts, Allison Roberts, David Coleman, Jose Garcia, Randall Hill, Donald Hampton, Arthur DeAngelis, Leila Leelikwist. Good afternoon, Miss Leelikwist. You have two minutes.
Good morning, county commissioners. I have some handouts. These are the current articles from the St. Pete Times. A copy for each of you. And I guess I should say good afternoon. I thank you for all of you who were able to attend the Fourth of July parade. It was a huge success. Our community enjoyed our, we had 200 Boy Scouts in the Oak Tree Canopy that we finally got cut thanks to Mr. Owens at the last minute, because it was almost this high. It should have been cut a month ago, but you got it done. Thank you so much. So the parade was a huge, huge success. We have a new honorary mayor, and you guys will meet her. I'll try to get her to come the next time I'm here, Georgie Franks. I think she's going to be instrumental in being, improving communication things within the community. And, well, let's see, real fast. So, we need to go back and rescind the whole idea of the library project. Couple of things happened. The Sunday Morning Program talked about our malls closing down across the country. We have a huge 500,000 square, 500,000 square feet of concrete in front of the Sears store that's been closed for five years in Brandon. Great idea. Let the Sears store be our adjacent library, keep our current library, and let our park stay where it is. It would save you guys money, and that shopping mall needs help. We could call it the Westfield Library. There's over 100,000 apartments, low-income and apartments, around the mall. That would make it easier for our members of our community to get to the library. We would still have our existing library in the heart of Brandon where it deserves to be, because the Clayton family gave it to us. So I want you guys to rescind the whole thing about the library. You guys can do it, and make us happy in Brandon, because we really don't want a library in a residential district. The shopping mall offers indoor playgrounds for our kids, so they can make it a multipurpose center. And I didn't get to talk about all the things I wanted to tell you guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
But anyway, if you guys could just go back and look at that Sunday Morning Program, this is a trend. We don't need more concrete.
Thank you, Ms. Leelikwist. Austin Zane?
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Austin Zane. I wrote a little parable to kind of convey how I've been feeling about the intense building up and tearing down of the ecosystems and environment. It's called "The Snake in the Grass." There once was a frog who lived in a little pond protected by a thicket of reeds. The frog loved to sing all day and night. Just on the outskirts of the reeds lived a snake. This was not a nice snake, for he bit any, he bit who he pleased and hated singing or anything harmonious. The snake spent countless hours coming up with plans on how he could get to that frog and shut him down. One day, the snake approached the humans and offered them a deal. If they removed the reeds, they could make jewelry and make money from them, and the snake would finally go for a swim, and he could, and in return, he would stop biting them forever. They agreed, and the humans began removing the reeds and the frog's pond, around, from the frog's pond. Without the reeds, the water of the pond was getting warmer, and the protection of the pond was slowly diminishing. Helpless, the frog went from his daily joyous singing to a constant worried hum. The snake watched from the side as the humans tore up the reeds and left the pond exposed for the first time in the frog's life. "Woe is me and my family's, and my family tree, for the pond is boiling, we are no longer protected, and we have nowhere to flee," said the frog. But the snake didn't strike yet. He laid in wait for when the frog was boiled and cooked, so he could enjoy his victory in a feast without a struggle. Weeks later, a human walked by the pond to check on the snake, and asked, "How nice is it now that the water is warm, that we've helped you clear out all of the reeds?" With the rest decorated in jewelry made of the reeds, the human reached his hand into the pond to feel the temperature of the water, and the snake bit his hand, killing the man and stealing his reed jewelry. And I'd like to finish with a quote from Pocahontas, "You can own the earth and still, all you'll own is earth until you can paint with all the colors of the wind."
Thank you, sir. Nick Shatini? Nick's not here? All right, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.